Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting tonight. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two changes I'd like to suggest for the order of our agenda tonight. Because we have some people in the audience that want to be here when we talk about our first topic, so.
That's fine.
I would like to move the executive session to the end of our meeting, so that we can do it. We know it's pertaining to a limited topic, so we shouldn't be here much longer beyond what we're scheduled. So if we could do that, and then.
Did you get what it was, because you were turning the other way?
I'm sorry, the executive session we're supposed to start with, I'd like to move it to the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because we have quite a few people here tonight that would like to go home.
Sure.
So, and then, we also have the items 7.0A is the policy adoption discussion for the facility use policy. I'd like to move that up to right after our student representatives are completed talking. So we can go right from that to the discussion that everybody is interested in. So if I could have a motion to do those two things?
She was first.
Change the order of the.
It's a suggestion.
Second.
And second it by Ms. Badger. All those in favor? Ananimos? Good. So with that change, do we have anyone, other than the topic we're going to talk about in a little while, is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the school committee tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to the next topic, which is the update from Plymouth South first, and that's Brianna.
So, we've had a fairly busy weekend at Plymouth South. We had a very successful homecoming dance with over 400 students in attendance. All of our athletic teams also had a lot of success over the weekend. We would like to thank all those who participated in the Booster Club Road Race Walk this weekend. It was a great turnout, and all the funds are going to student scholarships. This past Friday, members of the Student Council Executive Board traveled to College of the Holy Cross, partake in leadership training and variety workshops, as one of them. It was a great thing to be there, it was a lot of fun. Tomorrow night at South, there are two events, school council and a financial aid college planning night for parents of seniors. We are encouraging everyone to attend. October has been a month focused on college preparation. South hosted a great college fair last week with over 100 colleges. Students in grades 10 and 12 participated in the PSATs and SATs, while students in grade nine went on a field trip. But grade nine will have their turn to take the new grade nine PSAT on Thursday this week. The CVT advisory dinner is Thursday this week, where vocational programs will meet with their respective advisory boards. We would like to congratulate senior and school committee liaison Veronica Holmes, who has been selected as a National Merit Commended Scholar. She will be recognized at a small ceremony at South later this week. The annual fashion talent show will be next Thursday night. We have added a whole Halloween costume contest to the event, and the preschool children will also be wearing their costumes and show. That's why it's a little bit earlier this year, it's in October rather than November. And get your South winter or wool pom-pom hat, they're similar to the Patriots hats, and they have been a big hit, they're sold at the school store.
Very good, thank you, Max. North?
Hi, everyone. We'd first like to congratulate Abby Neuwies for being elected Plymouth North High School's Daughter of the American Revolution Good Citizen. Student council is selling pom-pom shirts for $35, they're long-sleeved blue shirts with Plymouth North on the front and back. Students may see Ms. McGirl or Ms. Paris to purchase them. Fall sports pitcher day will be on Friday after school. We'd also like to congratulate Plymouth North's first student athletes of the week, which we missed from last week. They were Miles Uva for football and Amelia Burke for soccer. And we'd like to congratulate the most recent student athletes of the week, Jordan Callahan for cross-country and Dan Rodriguez for soccer. The music department at Plymouth North will be starting their annual Fresh Florida Citrus fundraiser today through November 6th. You can contact Bonnie Holmes or David Grossman with any questions. Also, congratulations to Joey Grassi, she was the winner of the Boston Globe Oskelastic Award for basketball. On Friday, October 23rd, Plymouth North High School is hosting a block party before the football game in the school's back parking lot. Admissions start at 4:30, there is no fee. There are going to be long games and pink decorations to support Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This is for students only. As well, there will be a teal pumpkin project done by the decor program for allergy awareness. Guidance will also be holding the college planning night on Thursday, October 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. First-term coffee hour with the Plymouth North High School administrators will be Thursday, October 22nd, from 8:00 to 9:00 AM in the faculty dining room located in the cafeteria. Parents and guardians are invited to discuss topics relating, related to the Plymouth North High School school committee, school community. A reminder that the library and guidance departments are both open on Tuesdays and Thursdays until 4:00, with late buses provided at 4:00 as well.
Very good, thank you, there's a lot going on there. Thank you. Now, we're going to talk about the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee's update and recommendations for the school facilities and assorted fees policy. Could I, before we, logistical things, one, it's been a request from both sides here to turn the blowers off, somebody's doing that?
They're, we're working on it now.
And the other thing is, the light.
Yeah.
I feel like, I feel like I'm standing in front of headlights of a car here. Is there a reason why we don't have the other lights on?
It's because of the high-def.
Oh, that's the new high-def. All right, well, I don't like it.
We already said that.
They toned it down a bit, actually.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to be cranky, but.
It's going to adjust.
Just what we need to be, to be in high definition, really. Okay, the policy subcommittee met last Wednesday night, and I'll review the changes to this particular policy, but I think we're going to do this in two parts. And let me tell you why there has to be two parts. We'll talk about the substantive changes, and I think anybody was at that meeting with us the other night should help me with that part of it. The second part of our presentation on this policy subcommittee is, normally the policy subcommittee would have an opportunity to see the final product before it comes to the school committee. We didn't have that opportunity this time, so there are a few housekeeping items in this policy that we need to fix as well, but let's talk about the substantive changes that we made the other night. And the executive summary of those substantive changes are simple, and they, and they really address the cost of renting facilities. And we made some changes that were, the policy subcommittee's recommending to the school committee as follows. We reduced the price of the rental fee for the gym down, it was, I think it was at $120, and we brought it down to $80. And the other substantive change that relates not just to the gym, but any other rentals is that there was an extra charge to use the bathrooms, when you, you would have to pay for the field or the gym and then pay for the bathroom. The bathroom charge has been eliminated, so that'll be in the hourly rate for the facility that you're renting. Also, there was also an extra charge on the field lights, if you were outside, and again, we eliminated the charge on the field lights, so that your rental fee covers your lights if you need to use them. And then the other change that is sort of still not particularly clear, it has to do with custodian overtime. The policy subcommittee felt that if a custodian was available and not in overtime, the overtime fee would not be charged. However, if it was a Saturday or perhaps even a Sunday, although I don't know if we do Sundays, but if we did a Sunday, then there would be an overtime charge. So that's going to go either way, depending upon the availability of the custodian. So those are the main substantive changes, but I would, I would yield to the chairman or Mr. Gordon as well, that I missed something.
Can I, so on, back on the chart, the application fee for class two and class three, so that would be most of the people in the room, there would be no more application fee, that'll only be for the for-profit groups. And that's for each one of your, you know, events that you were scheduling, so that could start to add up.
The turf field as well.
What was the other one?
Turf field.
On the turf field.
There's a reduction in price.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the.
What was the reduction there?
I wasn't clear on whether there was a reduction in that price or not, that's why I didn't mention it.
We kept it at 55, we were talking about dropping it, but then we dropped, we eliminated the lights. We combined the press box and the scoreboard together, so for the, so before you were getting itemized, those things, we combined them, so the same charge covers you for that. And as Dr. Sorenson already said, the double gymnasium was 120, the reasoning behind that was that it was, really it could be set up as a triple, so that was where that came from. That's now going to be no, $80 instead for the double. And in several of the areas where we had, we used the wording, "a charge will apply", so there was no wiggle room, now it says "may apply". So now, there can be a discussion, and we can talk about, like the scheduling we were talking about for this field supervisor, Dr. Maestas is going to be working with different scheduling possibilities, so it, there, there's a chance of some flexibility now that we're using the phrasing "may" instead of "will". We did that in a few places.
Custodial fees, site supervisor fees, went from "will" to "may".
And, and then, the biggest one was, especially on one of the invoices you, you showed us, everybody, the representative showed us, the turf lights was something where, two years ago, when we last set these up, we didn't have the solars, the solar program fully deployed, now we do. So by revisiting it, it, it's no longer applicable, because now we have coverage under solar. Right?
Yep.
So, that was another one, where that was a $300 charge on one of the invoices, which was a significant chunk. The other reason we eliminated it, it wasn't consistent with South, because if you were to use the field at night with lights there, at South, there was no charge for it. Unfortunately, we'll talk about scheduling in a minute, one of the things with the scheduling is nobody was asking to use the field at South, so it didn't really come up, but those were the major financial things, I think, too. I think it'll, you'll see a significant drop in all of the charges there that way. There was another one I thought we dropped at a line item, but for some reason I can't. Yes, Ms. Badger?
I just have a quick question, where it says outdoor sound system, it says added charge, and I read through it, and maybe I just missed it when I was reading through the policy, but is there a definition of added charge?
What it is, is in, under the equipment.
Okay.
Because that's very sensitive and expensive equipment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what, depending on what they want to use, how they want to use it, et cetera.
Oh, okay, so that's the.
So it's going to be up to the facility, the facilities coordinator to really determine on a event basis.
Is there some sort of, like?
Actually, we would rather they not use it at all, right, Dr. Maestas?
I think the issue that we have is the responsibility of the equipment. If it, if it breaks, I mean, we're responsible for it, so hopefully, that, that's not going to be an issue. I mean, that's one of the things that we've struggled with, and we've talked about it with, with the group initially, is scoreboard use, that seems to be somewhat of an issue with the longevity of the equipment. And we've seen the longevity of equipment kind of, you know, we're always responsible for that in the long run, so that becomes an issue.
So those were the major cost savings that we were able to find. Something we may revisit in the future, we didn't want to do it now, because we wanted to do something quick to get it turned around for you, but in the future, we may take another look at, do we really need to have a class two and a class three distinction? There's really only three times when it's different, and that would be if you're looking to rent space at the library, or the middle school cafeteria, or an elementary school cafeteria. Those were the only three times when it was different, but that's, that's for a, I don't think anybody was looking, was really arguing over a library rental fee, but, so, if that becomes an issue, we can revisit the classes.
So, may I do some of the, some of the changes? Let me start out with a small typo on 2.1, in the middle of the paragraph there, there's an extra space before the word "of". On the first page, the very last sentence, on the first page in 3.1.1, the last sentence reads, "School or town employees desiring to rent school facilities will be considered class three." And I was wondering, Dr. Maestas, or, or the chair, is it possible for a school employee who would want to rent the school, rent the facility, and let's say they were doing a fundraising for ADS, or muscular dystrophy or something, couldn't they then be class one? Why would they have to be class three?
Technically, a class three would come to play if they were renting it for personal, not school, opportunities.
That's right. I, I understand it, but the sentence reads "will be considered class three". I think the sentence should read.
Yes.
"School or town employees desiring to rent the school will be considered class three unless qualified for class one or two."
Yes.
I think that ought to be added to that sentence.
Because they, they, if they're sponsoring us, a staff member, a walk for, we do, we do, we do them all the time.
Right.
It would be, it would be a school-sponsored event, but a teacher may sign up for it.
Right, exactly. So we could just add that to that last thing, unless qualified for class one or class two. On 3.1.3, it reads, "Any nonprofit group or organizations", they both should be plural, groups or organizations, I would make that change. And 3.1.4, this includes all groups and organizations, as opposed to or organizations. And chairman mentioned that the words "will" and "may" changed in 4.1.2.3 and 4.1.2.5. And now I'm down to cancellations under 6.1. The only possible cancellation it references here is due to bad weather, and I think we had a discussion the other night, sometimes cancellations are the result of unforeseen scheduled conflicts, not just bad weather. So I think that we ought to stick in here, "due to unexpected schedule conflicts and/or bad weather conditions." Because it's not just bad weather that causes a cancellation.
It does say that, though.
Does it?
"Due to bad weather conditions or other emergencies, unavailable custodial staff, or due to unanticipated conditions."
I didn't think that, I didn't think that a schedule conflict was an unanticipated condition or an emergency, that's why, but that's okay, if you think it covers it, that works for me, if you think it's there. All right. And I think that was the last. No. On 10.10.10, we, we repeatedly make reference to North High School, and I think we ought to take all North High School references out of there, and it should be, 10.10 should read "field requirement use", forget about the North High School part. And then, down below that, where it says turf field requirements, I think it should say, "The following rental requirements are applicable for all turf field rentals", again, dropping out the North High School component to that. And in the last, in the last thing on the bottom of the page, "Only players, coaches, officials, and North High School staff", again, take that out and put in Plymouth Public School staff. And I do think, oh, and there's one more reference to North High School at 10.11, and that, that's all the, the housekeeping items that I think need to be adjusted. As I said before, normally this would have been done before we got to committee, but we didn't have the time this time.
We appreciate the speed with which you did address this. We met during this week and went through all this, and I appreciate it, because Mr. Morgan, Dr. Sorenson, and Dr. Campbell, and Dr. Maestas, all the doctors were there, and stayed till 9:30 the other night to make sure that we could get this in front of you tonight. So that's, that's important. So that, so that's all the policy. Now, normally we would vote on this right now and have discussion, everything else, but as we can see, there's a lot of people here tonight that wanted to give some feedback. So I think before we vote on it, we should hear the feedback, in case we want to make some more changes, or tweaks, or suggestions, follow-ups, or whatever. If everybody's okay with that, I will turn it to the audience. We have Selectmen Mahoney here tonight, who is helping with this effort. You guys, um, don't be shy, we have more chairs, if. You just need to, for the record, just.
I'm Todd Peterson, representing PYBS, that's Plymouth University Football and Softball.
I'm Mary Ellen Weeks, I represent Plymouth Pop Warner Vikings, the youth football program in the north end of town.
Kaitlin Davis, I represent Jaguars, South Plymouth Football.
My name's Mark Manfredi, I don't need that, I'm loud. I am the president of the Plymouth North Basketball Association, as well as on the board of directors for Plymouth Bay Brewth.
And John Mahoney from the Board of Selectmen, Dennis, thank you for putting this together and participating, and I will allow the individuals to my right to weigh in on the, you know, the current proposal.
We, we have one more thing I just want to touch on, so we didn't talk about the scheduling part yet, that's really going to come after we vote on this part, which is the policy. Then we'll talk about the unique, because I know that's important to you two especially, the unique conditions that were encountered because of the construction at South High. So, we'll, we'll follow up with that after this, because that wouldn't be part of this policy, because obviously, this is more generic. And who wants to go first? Mark?
I'll speak.
You're going to need a, yeah, for the audience.
I just had a few questions, actually, in regards to what was already gone over. So, the fee may apply to the custodial and, Pam unplugged, field maintenance, is that what that was referring to? When you said it may apply?
Let me kind of go over, my laptop's about ready to die, so, sorry. Let me kind of go over a scenario that, that this would, would probably clarify that. Let's say there is an event that's going on at Plymouth North or Plymouth South High School, and there's a custodian on duty already on a Saturday, or for that matter, a Sunday. The fee for custodial would not be charged, because somebody would be on staff. So, the dilemma that we have at our elementaries and middle schools is we do not have weakened custodians. So, based on their contract, if they are called in to open the building, to be available, they would be, a ten and a half charge for an employee would be charged, would be assessed to the renter. Keep in mind that there's a three-hour minimum that applies, so that's part of the contract for, for that particular unit. So, that's where the dilemma comes in, when you start looking at fees for staff to be available. So, that, that would apply for buildings that don't have a custodian that's already on the clock, on staff. Typically, North and South, we do have custodians on staff on Saturdays, so, it all, it all depends on when the building's reserved, and our coordinator for building use can work with any of the renters to see when those opportunities are available. But that's, that's, that's a definite issue when we're looking at using the buildings outside of the middle schools and, outside the high schools.
Sure. So typically, at most of the schools during the week, there's custodians there till 11 o'clock at night, or?
Yeah, a fee would not be charged in that instance.
And in regards to the field maintenance individual, I know that's a separate individual that, you know, there's a group of them that, that were hired to do that job, how, how would that apply?
The, the policy change that's proposed, the word "may" was inserted. The word "may" would be applied if we do not have a trained person on hand to be able to fill that role. We discussed it in our, in our meeting last week, that Mr. Costin is interested in putting together a certification-type training for groups that would be mandated to have somebody trained to be available to fulfill that, that role. So, high level of responsibility from the groups to be able to take some level of ownership, the way that you have demonstrated to take on the buildings and grounds issues that you do already with the town. So, we would just come up with a training that would certify somebody on staff, very similar to when we rent the concession area, and a safe serve certification person has to be available, we did that, we did that with the concession. I mean, we would allow certain things if there was some level of partnership that was developed, and a certification would be applied. So, that's something that we would do, is come up with some type of training that would go over, I mean, the turf is one of those difficult areas where, you know, colored drinks, sunflower seeds, gum, all those things that we have to monitor, we would have to come up with some, some kind of training where that, you know, I think it almost would be better, because there'd probably be more eyes than just one person watching this, and I think we would try to form some level of responsible partnership with the groups that would use it under these two categories. Category four, they're going to have to hire somebody to do that.
Okay. The other question I had, you had mentioned that school employees, the town employees, there's no charge if they rent the facility, correct? So, to give an example, if, say, Coach Corbin wanted to run a coach's clinic for Pop Warner and the Vikings, and he went and rented the field, is that, does that fall into that category, or is it because if they're renting, if he's doing it for an organization?
In other words, he can't be making a profit on that.
Sure.
But if he was doing it just for the kids, right, that's when he would fall into that category.
I think the spirit of the policy when it was initially written, and the provision was really.
was really intended for an employee who may want to run an after-school program for the kids in the building, not necessarily an outside group that would come in.
Okay.
Because that creates somewhat of a loophole, and I think we'd have to discuss that. Because if you can imagine, there could be loopholes left and right for, you know, you're a town employee, you could be running, you know, baseball clinics for the entire youth program. And that's, I think that, that creates a loophole if we did interpret it that way.
Okay. And my last question, when do these changes take effect?
Twenty twenty.
Well, the Policy Committee presents the policy. It takes effect when the School Committee votes on the policy.
No further comments.
That's why we were trying to expedite it, for that very reason.
So the Jaguars, as you know, have been displaced because of South High. We used to practice up on the, and, and you know the story. But we've paid already this year for close to four thousand. Will there be, will we get any credit for, because it's already prepaid, our last home game at North is this weekend. Will we get any credit, or anything?
I think it begins today.
Yeah.
Nothing retroactive.
No, okay.
The recommendation is to change the policy at a given date. That's where the change takes place.
Okay.
We would say if you've paid for the, a game that has not been played.
We did.
We would then, if the policy takes place tonight, the new fees would apply.
Okay.
We would give you a credit for the next time, for that difference, for that next game, not for the back, but for the future.
Okay.
Okay. And we can communicate that with our facilities, with Jill. And you're familiar with her.
Yes, yep.
I just have one question. You combined the press box and the scoreboard. Is that, does that remove the scoreboard operator thirty dollar and seventeen cent fee? Is that what that is?
Any personnel that are required under contract, or anything like that, remember I mentioned this the other day to you, is you can't change any collective bargaining agreements. Anything that's agrees, if so, if it's already agreed in someone's contract, that they've got, a professional's got to be on site, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Miestis, we have to honor that and adhere to that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's true. The, I think that's something that we need to clarify still. I think the provision for scoreboard use, right now, is a staff member that is assigned to that particular duty. We did also talk within our group that we may want to develop some level, if it's, if it's allowable through contract, to develop some level of certification for that, for that provision as well.
Okay.
The, the issue that we have, and as you can imagine, I mean, we're replacing the scoreboard at South Middle School. I mean, that's, I mean, they, they get worn out. I don't want to be pointing fingers. Hopefully, we can get people that are, that are not going to allow a kid to go and take score, but somebody that has some level of authorization, responsibility to do that. So that's something that we need to work on, and I think we did discuss that in, in our, in our meeting, that we would be working on, on some level of provision to be able to work something out.
Okay. So what, Mr. Bagley, let me just clarify this real quick. So we have to pay, we have a league representative that's certified as a scoreboard operator. So when we used this in the past, does that qualify as someone, is that what we're saying?
From my understanding, based on the meeting that we had at North High School a couple of weeks ago, some of your leagues, by the nature of the league, by the, a rule provision in the league.
Correct.
You must have an authorized league scorekeeper.
Correct.
At, at the helm.
Mm-hmm.
I think that is something that we need to consider, as far as perhaps that may suffice as far as somebody that is authorized to be able to take score.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something that we, we did touch on that, but we didn't really come up with any definite understanding as to what we'd allow or not allow.
Okay.
Okay? Because it would be, in a sense, pointless to have two people, one watching the other.
Right.
Right? Because your, your person has to be there by statute of your league.
Correct.
Correct?
That's why it was so important to change, it seems like legalese, but it's so important to change "will" to "may." Because before, it was a closed door. Right? But now, you can come up with a special circumstance, run it past Dr. Miestis, and he'll see if it meets, you know, the criteria. Scott?
I think the, the other thing that I think is, I think you, you all presented compelling instances of the willingness to approach building use, field use, facility use as a partnership. And I think the School Committee felt compelled to be able to not only address the displacement issues, but also take a look at the fees, knowing that South High School's coming online, knowing that we're just beginning to really experience some of these field difficulties. I think their, their, the intent is to really have a high level of oversight of those fields. And if we can do that through policy, we can do that through partnership, we'll probably make this a lot better situation.
First and foremost, I just want to say thank you to all of you for hearing our concerns, and obviously, we came to you, reaching out for some support, because at the end of the day, it's, it's about the kids. The only thing, looking at this, I, I think there's some, some great steps in the right direction. The only thing that I would just ask, that I know that you said you were talking about revisiting the fee structure on the turf baseball field. The light thing is, is huge. The only problem we run into is the age group of our children. We don't normally have them play in the summertime, at nighttime, to get that late, because quite frankly, there, a lot of them are nine through twelve. So realistically, under the lights for us, for the Bay Bruth kids, absolutely, a hundred percent. The only thing that, this really affects us is that we would just ask, or just look at the fact of the consideration on the baseball field, any type of reduction there, because that's our main staple, that my particular group would be interested in, and, and have a lot of impact, too. I think the fees, and you've done a lot, you've waived a lot, I, you know, I definitely think it's a step in the right direction. I just, I would be remiss if I didn't ask on behalf of those kids, because like I said, that's our, our main, our main staple is the younger kids. The only other thing, and I didn't know if it came up at committee, or came up through the course of it, is if there was an entire daily rental fee. The only reason why I ask you this is, most of the time, we're not looking to rent these fields on a regular basis, or a weekly basis, or anything like that. We do it for special events, be it playoffs, be it opening day ceremonies, that type of deal. So we would, we would essentially rent that field for the entire day, and we would give you ample notice, et cetera. So I didn't know if there was any type of, you know, a max, a, you know, five hundred dollars for the day, or, you know what I mean? I'm not just, I'm just throwing out a rough idea to say that we would have it for that timeframe. Obviously, we'd be bound by the terms and conditions of, you know, whatever contractual obligations we have. We understand that, and we're not trying to rebuke the system. That's the only thing that I'd ask for a little consideration on, because of the group that I'm dealing with, primarily, as much as, you know, I have older, older, an older son who does play at an older level, which the, under the lights thing is a huge thing for them, and we appreciate that. But the younger kids, to be honest with you, they're in bed, and they're, they're doing sweet dreams by that time. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the consideration that you guys are giving our groups. Thank you.
Well, before, before we move on, then, Dr. Sorensen?
Well, just, just two things. There's a couple of things that came from this discussion tonight, that'll go back to policy. And that one in particular, we'll discuss whether or not there's the vehicle by which we can do that. But I, I also want to put out, and I'm sure all of you folks understand, that, you know, when we present our budget in December, and then we present it to the Board of Selectmen, we often hear back from town manager, "You got to cut, you got to cut, you got to cut." So we're all in this for the kids, and we're trying, we have to provide a lot, and we certainly don't want to balance the budget on the backs of the athletes. But it's an issue that we have to face all the time as well.
So the, on your two points, then, it was the fifty-five dollars for the turf fee, which is the same whether you're class two or class three. And, and then some sort of a daily rate, or a maximum hourly rate?
For the day, because essentially, when we rent those, you know, fields, it's for an opening day, a playoff series, or whatever, and we would be willing to go for the day, because it's going to be more than one team, it's going to be as many games as we can get into that timeframe. So that's what, just, just to throw it out there, to see if it would be more cost-effective, and that way, you guys could plan on that for that total amount of money versus the hourly rental. And the third point was the official scorekeeper versus another scorekeeper.
Yep. Yep.
Did you want to comment more? Anybody want to comment more?
Just, just to follow up.
Dr. Miestis?
Just to follow up, just keep in mind that there is still the provision that we're working on for accumulated hours that could be applied to those kiddos that, that it, I think it'll, yeah. Yeah. So the athletic directors at both high schools are working with Barry de Blasio to take a look at the amount of hours that we're displacing, come up with a formula, so that those can be applied through the duration of the construction project. But keep, keep in mind, those are in abeyance, that can be applied to some of the fees, so that it's not going to be so costly. It might be, it might apply to some of the younger groups.
Selectman Mahoney?
Dennis, just a follow-up comment, and I'll wrap up my thoughts. But what Dr. Sorensen said, when, you know, we get into that budgetary process, and it's cut, cut, cut. You get a, you have to leave things in the budget that you value, you want to invest in certain things, you know, basic infrastructure, and one of those things is recreation. And I can go, I'll tell you, I'm going to go back to my board, and, you know, especially under the recommendation of the Recreation Director, Barry de Blasio, we don't have enough fields in the community. You're a community of roughly sixty thousand people. The population projections are putting us at seventy-six to eighty-four thousand around 2030. Even if those numbers are high, and you get up to sixty-five or seventy thousand, we don't have enough fields. So, you know, hopefully Stevens Field, that's a, you know, that's a nice little multipurpose field that might be brought online in two to three years. We're looking at Forgers' expansion, possibly down the road. And the Recreation Director mentioned potentially a multi-use field up at Veterans Park in North Plymouth. So when you cut, 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 you get to the point where it manifests itself in negative situations, such as what's going on in Morton Park right now. For those people, you're, you're compromising their quality of life and suppressing their real estate values. So there's, you know, this is a fix, where you're, you're investing in the youth of the community, and it ties in with, you know, unfortunately, the opiate thing. And statistically, you look at the studies, where you want to get these kids busy in that two to six, or three to seven range in the afternoon, well, this does that. So just want to thank everybody involved. I, I don't know when we met, it was a week or two ago on Wednesday night, I believe, but, you know, the, the turnout that night was phenomenal. I know we had about sixteen leagues represented, and I think ten, you know, people from the town and school side, so, but I appreciate you finding the middle ground, where, you know, we can hopefully, you know, walk away from this happy.
Okay. Did anybody else want to comment? Anyone else in the audience want to add to the comments already? Yep, come on.
You're just.
No, you have to come down to.
You need a mic.
You're being beamed out across Plymouth right now, so.
I just wanted to kind of reiterate. I'm from Plymouth Youth Soccer, and our, our point is more to the fact that we are running out of fields. Sorry, that we are running out of fields. We have nine hundred kids in our program this year, which is up a hundred and fifty from two, three years ago. So we're looking at, you know, three teams crammed to a field, and just to reiterate the point of the Forgers' field, and the, the Veterans' field, or whatever, that they were talking about building, that Plymouth Youth Soccer, we, of course, you know, all these changes you guys have made, we appreciate them also and stuff, and we'll look into using some of the high school fields for events. But, but our big issue is also the, the, just the lack of fields around, so.
Right. And I don't know if you caught, a few weeks ago, we were lucky enough to have a presentation from A.D. Makepeace regarding South Elementary, and there'll be a whole new field in the back there, which right now is just being used for parking. So that'll be an additional field. And also, we, at West Elementary, not fields, but basketball courts, because of the generosity of the Mark Wahlberg Foundation, we added two courts there, so.
Nice.
Little by little. And then if Mr. Mahoney can take back what he said to the full board, and squeeze them for some more, that'll be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The gentleman from Plymouth Youth Soccer, could you please give the secretary your name, please? She needs your name.
So the feedback we had there, there's clearly a few more points that the subcommittee will take back under advisement, meet again, and come back with some tweaks, maybe additional tweaks for the, but I think it's important that we get this out, so that they can get relief as soon as possible. So with that, I would look for a motion.
I'll move to make the recommended changes with advice to go back and look at the suggested issues, or if more further concerns.
And seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further que, discussion? All those in favor? Anonymous. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I would just, I, I wanted to just make sure I didn't forget that, first of all, the displacement credits, we'll do that outside this policy, because temporary has to do with the construction of South. So as we already touched on it, you'll be getting back with, in touch with them. Now that we have everybody's email, and we have a full, solid group, Mr. de Blasio will work with him.
Yes.
To get these credits going for the displacement credits.
We'll also go and look at the displacement from North during that period of time.
Yes.
And we've, we've decided that that's the process that we'll take.
That's excellent. Very good. And then, I just wanted to encourage everybody, in the past, the way we find out about these sorts of things is, you know, we, people hear things, a discussion on Facebook, or, you know, someone's complaining and speak out, or something like that. Those while, those are good avenues to vent. The best avenue is to come right here and sit in these chairs and tell us what's going on. That way, you cut out all the rumors, all the innuendos and stuff, and we talk face to face, and we work it out. So I hope, you know, we'll have more productive sessions like this one.
So as we were talking, and Ms. Davis with the Jaguars brought up, obviously, there's no refund for things, you know, going back. My only question is, where we have paid for these field lights for some time, is that anything that can be adjusted, given the fact that there was, it was essentially a donation towards?
I don't think so.
The public schools?
It starts to get messy when you start talking about retroactive stuff. I'll leave up to Mr. Costin to give me some feedback on that. Should I, we stay away from anything retroactive?
I think that's true, taking it right out of the school budget. Any money that we would have collected for electricity or lights would have been applied towards our electric bill. So we're not sitting on a pot of money that we have that we can refund, or.
Right.
I would, I, I don't know how we would credit that going in the future. I think.
And I'm not talking monetarily.
I, I think I do need to still make the point that.
She just took money off the table.
Right. I'm saying, I'm saying in moving forward, so essentially, I do have a figure, but I paid almost, or we paid, my organization paid twelve hundred dollars in light fees last year. So with that being said, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of credits, as we talked about displacement credits and whatnot.
How about this? How about we say, we don't have a problem with Dr. Miestis researching that and, and looking at it when he's looking at the displacement credits. Don't walk away thinking that I just said we're going to do that.
No, no, no.
He's going to look at it, and if he thinks it's reasonable, he'll give that feedback back to this full committee.
Mm-hmm.
And the full committee will, you know, discuss what he finds, but.
Very much appreciated.
Sounds reasonable that you have some sort of a credit, maybe, applied towards future events or something.
Future use, right.
I seriously doubt it'll be the full amount, but it might be something.
Understandable. But again, as Scott said, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, so.
Do I ask some guys?
Very good. Very good. So that, that concludes that item and now... To get back... Old business, right? Did I skip, did I do that right? Old business, right? Yep, yep. We did, that's what we were just touching on about the displacement and, and Dr. Maestas said that he'll cover that.
Okay, I didn't know if there was more of that.
And Ms. Badger?
Just an update on the item I brought up last, last meeting on Plymouth North. At the safety meeting we discussed, they're going to start looking into speed bumps and see if speed bump placements would be a good thing to slow down the traffic at North by the tennis court.
Yes, did we, we had that, I'm sorry, I didn't check, didn't we mention that the last meeting?
No, I brought it up.
Yeah, okay.
But then I brought the safety and then safety decided that was something, so I was just giving an update.
Okay, thank you. Any other updates that anybody wanted? Yes?
I don't think that we've had a home football game since discussing the level of noise, but I think it was investigated, correct?
Yes. Good, good point, Ms. Hunt. We, actually, the night of the last school committee meeting, you brought up an issue regarding the sound system at Plymouth North High School. So, that night I emailed the Athletic Director.
I'll respond right away.
And he investigated the situation in the morning and what landed up happening and what has been happening is typically the dance team cheerleaders would take an iPhone and they would plug the iPhone into the sound system. And I, what they discovered was the audio jack wasn't inserted 100% into the iPhone, causing a very low volume and it was only one channel. So, they instructed the person who was going to be plugging their phone into the system to take the cover off because the cover was prohibiting the eighth inch jack, audio jack, from being inserted fully into the phone. So, once they did that...
Problem solved.
Problem solved.
Great.
Man, we're on a roll tonight, boy.
That's good to hear.
Very good.
They have the, another home game this Friday, I think is the first game since then, so we'll...
We can, yeah, and I, I know that the Athletic Director went out and was on the field with the kids. They gave it a shot and they were happy with the sound.
Great.
And I know they did do that. So they did it, they tested it two different times and apparently they were happy that it was resolved.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and if I can add on to that, I was at the band event and the sound was fine. A lot of it, they brought their own speakers and when it's on the field, as we saw in this, we had a professional do give us a sound analysis of the fields and everything, the surrounding obstructions and stuff. When the sound is in front of you being pumped at you, there's no distortion and it also, there's not as much bounce to the neighborhood and everything and it, I didn't notice any distortion the other day, anyway. So, it's good, sound, thank you. Any other updates? Good, next meeting, if it's okay with everybody, I, I think it's time for us to start at the top and just, we'll just walk through everything that's sitting on that list and...
Yeah, there, there might be some things we can take off, yeah.
We did it a few meetings ago and we cleaned up the list quite a bit, so maybe the next meeting we'll take that time to do that. Does anybody have any new business they would like to bring up tonight? Yep.
I forgot something under old business.
Old business, okay.
Hold on. Um, I think it was at the, oh, never mind, I, for some reason, I didn't see the recycling before. Never mind, go ahead, continue. Just making sure it was added.
Dr. Maestas has the superintendent report now.
Yes. I have a few items to report on tonight. We had town meeting on Saturday and I just want to thank town meeting members for their productivity. We, we kind of thought that we were going to go into tonight with the, with the agenda, but it, it moved along and I'd like to really thank town meeting for the support of, of our items that we had on the, on the, on the agenda. So, it was a very eventful day and it took the whole day, but we're grateful to be here tonight. This is a, a date that you may want to just keep in your minds. The, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is scheduled to vote on the future of Park on November 17th. Keep in mind that that date is something that we're watching closely because we will have determination of what happens with the Park assessment. And there's also a public hearing in Malden the night before from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. So that's an open public hearing for people to chime in on, on Park, but keep, keep in mind, we'll, I'll send something out to you as soon as I find out on the 17th, all right? If you go to the Plymouth Public Schools website, there is a clip of the week and it's a Plymouth International Chorus interview. And it's really well done and I'd like to thank Dan Riley and his staff for putting that together. And we actually shared that with our friends in Plymouth, England, and they were absolutely blown away with the quality and, and the message that is contained within that video. And it's really a message of solidarity and, and really working towards the 400. So it was, was well done and if you haven't had a chance to watch it, I would take a few minutes to do so. And the last thing I have to report is we have confirmation that we will be receiving about 20 kids from Plymouth, England this spring. 22 kids. And they will be here the end of May and into the first week of June. Right before graduation.
Graduation.
And, yes, they will be leaving before graduation. And we'll be having an accent pact a week before graduation. But what's really going to be unbelievable is we'll have over 80 students from Plymouth joining them to, to do a performance at the Performing Arts Center and it'll be an international choir that will be performing for the community and that's going to be absolutely fascinating and I hope our community gets to feel what the, could the community of Plymouth, England felt this summer when our students were performing there. So, we got confirmation of that this, this last week. They've already reserved tickets, they've already selected the 22 children. So, they have six chaperones coming, so we will be looking for host families to be able to help with that. We've identified a number that, a lot of our kids that went want to, want to host. So we'll be looking for that in the next few months and we'll keep updating you on the progress that we're making with, with this team. So, it's pretty exciting to have a reciprocal group coming. So, that's my report tonight.
Very nice. Dr. Sorensen?
I had heard this on the news today as well, or yesterday, and I was a little surprised that, that there actually is some, some discussion about not going, about dropping Park and going back to... Did we know that last year? I, I'm shocked by that.
It was...
Well, that's why I was under tests.
Yeah, what, what we knew is that they hadn't voted on whether or not to adopt it yet. So, that, that vote will come, as Dr. Maestas said, on November 17th.
I think, Dr. Sorensen, to your point, I think there was great promise that Park would be the next assessment. I think there's, there's still a lot of confusion between Park and Common Core. You know, Park is the assessment of the Common Core and I think there's a lot of misconception on, on, on both of them. But again, last year was a pilot year and...
We took great strides in this community...
Yes, we did.
To get Park established and now we're hearing that the possibility of all that would be for naught. And I, and I really, really feel that's unfair.
Dr. Campbell?
I think regardless of what the Commonwealth decides to adopt, that you're going to see, let's say that they stay with MCAS, for example, and want more local control, there's going to have to be revisions to that assessment. You're going to see a, a significant technology integration, much like Park. You're going to see something that is reflective of the new Massachusetts state standards, which happen to be based on the Common Core standards. So, I think you're going to see regardless of what test it is, the work that we did is not for naught. That it will certainly go, those, the competencies and the skills and the standards continue to be addressed in the classroom and the technology is crucial to, to, to that process.
We'll have more discussions on that one, I suspect. The month and the year ahead. Dr. Ghul, retirements?
Thank you, Mr. Begley, we have a few to announce this evening. Sadly for us up at Central Office, Donna Andrews, who most people don't actually know by face, but she delivers a lot of the elementary paychecks, so they know her certainly by that function, will retire December 11th after 23 years of service to us in the district. It's a tough loss up at Central Office. Lawrence Larry Smith, First Shift Custodian here at PCIS, will retire December 31st after 10 years of service. And Robert Usher, Maintenance Truck Driver for the Facilities Office, October, this couple of weeks, last next week, October 30th after 29 years of service. Yeah, sad.
Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the school committee, I'd like to thank these three individuals for their combined 62 years of service to the district and wish them a happy retirement.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Hunt, correspondence?
There is no correspondence tonight.
And now we're ready, Mr. Costin's multitasking over there, that's good. I just got an email from him, so. Science and Technology and Engineering.
Tonight, we're honored to have Allison Reardon, our Science Coordinator for the District. She is here tonight to provide an update on her program. Welcome.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
How you doing?
How are you?
Excellent. There we go, okay. Good evening. This evening I wanted to present at different levels to give you a little bit of understanding of what we've been doing in the last year. I spoke last October. I enjoy speaking in October unlike other people. I like giving you a fresh start in what we've done, so we'll get into it with elementary. I've updated a couple of different projects that we've been invested in recently. Science projects, a few years ago, we worked with grade five teachers across the district and I, I guess mandate would be the word. But we strongly encouraged our schools and our grade five students to go through a long-term individual science project. And that really took off. Different schools took different paths to get there and some had individual science celebrations, some had science nights, some had science days, some incorporated little buddies into their fifth grade projects. So it's been a great success and that continues. I'm working with Federal Furnace tomorrow and their grade five teachers as well to further shape that. So as the year progresses, I get invited to schools to work with them to put different twists on the projects depending upon the school and what they're interested in and where their focus is. So that's been a great success. With regards to professional development, last year, we partnered with Cambridge College to offer a brand-new science and technology engineering course and we did it through Chris's office, we were able to. And it was a very popular course, it followed the new standards, we had a lot of elementary teachers take it and they went back to their schools and they were very happy to present and share that information as well. So that was hugely successful. And on the heels of that, with so much interest and success, we partnered with the New England Aquarium and offered two courses here in town. I reached out to the New England Aquarium and I said, "You offer great professional development, but you're an hour away from us and that's really frustrating for a teacher who wants to get involved in PD." So they were very willing to come down to Plymouth, being on the ocean, and teach these courses. So they taught an Intro to Ocean Sciences course, they did that during the school year and that was open to K through eight staff. And then they came back in the summer and they offered a one-week intensive course to early elementary teachers. And again, both were well-subscribed to, we filled the courses. I actually went out onto the water down by Stevens Field with the group in the summertime where they were doing some studies and some tide pooling. And as a result of that, I'm going to take one example and that's Nathaniel Morton. They've truly embraced it. They had, their third grade team took the intro course, their assistant principal Chrissy Chase took the course. They, they really had a deep-seated interest, given their location of their school. And this year, what they've been doing to capitalize on that, each floor of the school has taken on a different level of the ocean. So we've got the midnight, we've got the sunlit zone, we have the twilight zone, and then each class on that level of the school has taken on the name, the characterization of one of the organisms that live at that level. So I have a couple of pictures here, we've got the rays, we have some seals, we have some oysters and some whales. And those, those classrooms are really embracing this this year and they're really getting into it, and the teachers especially. And, and so there has been a renewed focus on Monday coming up, Mr. Spencer is taking his staff, their staff meeting from 3:00 to 4:00, they're actually going out on Captain John boats and they're going to go out and do some ocean exploration out there that they can learn and then bring back to the classroom as well. And I'm excited because we have limited our number of trips to the Apple Orchard this fall and instead, our students are taking walks to the ocean, which I'm thrilled with, so that's an exciting piece. The other picture that's up there are some cardboard boxes with a whole lot of tape sitting on some plastic. And to you, that's exactly what they look like. But to the K through six students that were in Camp Invention this summer, those are some incredibly super-fast go-karts. We had 115 students over the summer take 32 and a half hours of intensive engineering design at, at this school here at PCIS and they couldn't have been happier. They're here every day from 9:00 to 3:30. The previous year, I was not as involved as I was this year because I would, I was out on maternity leave, but this year I got to see it firsthand, I was in there with the kids and they have so much fun. I mean, you're, you're in there with kindergarten students, you're in there with sixth grade students, you have middle school students and high school students who also serve as mentors and camp counselors. And then you have staff here from PCIS who are the teaching staff. It just so happens that we have a, a great staff we've had for two years now who do the program and they're located here, so they're familiar with the building. And the kids are zooming down in these go-karts. These little kindergartners are being put into these cardboard boxes and pushed down the hallways and they're fabulous. I mean, their, their inventions and their excitement is great. We've made a commitment to offer Camp Invention again this coming summer. They've released their curriculum, it's called Epic. This year, the students are going to be charged with making a solar-powered cricket. It's called a Crickobot. And they're also going to be working with Epic Park, which is designing an engineering-type Disneyland. So they'll have that opportunity, it's, it's meant to be on a, on an island with a rainforest, so that should be a lot of fun. And they'll continue to do a take apart. That's one of them, that one of the best parts of the week is that the students bring in a recycled item. They might bring in an old DVD player, they might bring in an old VCR, an alarm clock, and the students take it apart and they use those parts to reinvent something during the week. And again, to see a second grader take apart an alarm clock and say, "I know exactly what I'm going to do with these LED lights," is really great. It's a great conversation to have. And then they'll also be involved with some coding and the chemistry of polymers this summer as well. Working with unit planning with the elementary schools, I've actually already been at Manomet this year for two days. I spent all day, I'm going to be at Federal Furnace tomorrow, Nathaniel Morton in a couple of weeks in cold spring. I'm getting around and I'm spending multiple days at each school, working with grade-level teams on the new standards. We, I sat before you for a few times now and saying, "We have a new framework." It just kind of keeps getting pushed back. And this time, we're pushed back a little bit because of the Park decision. We're playing, we're playing second place to that. And so as soon as the Park decision is released in November, we should be out for a public comment after the October vote and then we should be adopted in January. So, I've been working with the elementary staff to go over the new standards and we literally sit in a room together and we look at the new standards and we go through them one by one and we translate them and we talk about what are the steps that are needed to be taught in advance of that in order for that performance learning standard to actually be understood by the students and the teachers. So we've been doing that as well. And then finally, the robotics rally. This is something that we've had for many years in Plymouth and due to the retirement of Cindy Greenwood, who has long been in charge of this, Julia Colby and I have taken on the leadership role of putting together the Elementary Robotics Rally. So we are, the biggest change is it's going to be about a month earlier, it's going to be in March, it's March 22nd, so mark your calendars, it'll be at North High, you'll all receive an invitation. And we have entered into some... And we have entered into some partnerships with some groups. For instance, Mr. Hannah has enlisted his CAD and graphics programs, and we are making a logo through the program. So there's a logo contest going on at South High right now. We have Mr. Bastoni's engineering program, who will be involved with the event as well. We also have the North High Honor Society, who we've invited to participate as well. The thought is that our students will compete in the PAC, and while our students are competing, our parents and guests from the community will be watching the competition in the PAC as well. The students who are waiting to compete will actually be in the cafeteria. And while they're in the cafeteria, as you know, we want to keep kids busy. We want to keep them entertained. We want to keep them engaged in something. So we'd like to do tours of Mr. Bastoni's lab area. We like to call them inspirational tours. We'd also like to have some coding activities available. We'd like to have some help desks, so some high-school students who could help out the elementary students once they get there. Their robots are usually always working, but as they sit and they tinker for a few hours, then they usually don't work. So we'll have a help desk. We'll have some other different activities that are available for kids. So just kind of to make it be a pretty significant event for them in a bigger stage, I guess, is what we're looking for. So that's, for the most part, what we've been doing at the elementary level. The middle-school level, again, with the professional development, the Cambridge College, New England Aquarium courses were also offered at this level. And again, I had a number of teachers that took advantage of both. And besides that, with regards to professional development, the beginning of this year, Eric Palmer came and spoke to our middle-school teachers as well regarding public speaking and the use of PV legs, as he likes to call it, and that's poise, voice, life, eye contact, gestures, and speed. And so we have been working and discussing at the middle-school how to incorporate some of the work that they've been involved there. The pictures that you see up there also are part of the South Shore Science Center grant in addition to the PD opportunities. Three teachers on the left, that's Caitlin Patrissi, Rob Skinner, and Karen Runyon. They're all teachers at South Middle School. And last year, Judy Bradley reached out to me, she's also a teacher at South Middle, and said to me, "You know, I've got this friend who I go burning with, and he works at the South Shore Science Center, Norwell, and he has a grant. He would love to come to South Middle and build some ocean drifters with us." And so for those of you that don't know, there is a large student ocean drifter program, and it's affiliated with NOAA. And the students build these objects that the three teachers are holding. And these are the two ocean drifters that they built last year. The one on the right is made of bamboo, and the one on the left is made of aluminum. And Mr. Glusa came down from the Science Center, and he came down for three visits. The first visit, he came and explained the ocean drifter program to the students and what the purpose of it is, and when these ocean drifters go into the water, they actually have satellite systems on there, and they send information back regarding the ocean currents and how NOAA uses that information. So he came on the first visit to explain that to students. On the second visit, they actually built the drifters, and through money that we had in our budget, his grant provides one through money in our budget, and because of student interest, we made a contribution to go ahead and do a second. So the students could do some engineering comparisons to see how the aluminum versus the bamboo actually survived out on the water. And then on his third visit, he came back, and through the efforts of Captain John Boats and the PTA at South Middle, the students were actually able to go out onto a whale watch and release, excuse me, release the ocean drifters. And so what you see in the middle picture is the bamboo ocean drifter, which was caught off the coast of Maine. It was washed ashore. And this is what happens. Fishermen all over will pick these up. They'll see them washed up. They'll see them on rocks, and they'll pick them up. And you put on the masts, "Please, if you find me, call," and they get back to us. And if they're in good shape, the fishermen will actually re-release them. And so ours wasn't in the best of shape, as you can tell, so I'm not quite sure if that's coming back. Both ocean drifters were released in May, and they were actually deployed on May 21st, and we were in contact with them through August 14th. And so that map, I can't, I don't know if you can tell on that map. I don't have a mouse to show you, but is there, there's a laser on that, maybe? Yes, there is. Right here, this is Cape Cod. And so our ocean, we had, there's a number of drifters here. The green is one of our drifter, drifters, excuse me. And you can see, it actually got itself past the continental shelf, so that's pretty far, believe it or not. And then the blue one up here is also ours. And so what happens is there's a battery pack in the top, and so it only lasts so long, so that's why they only lasted till about August. And so, yes, it's very cool. Our kids followed it and really loved it. So he came back, actually. He called us, and he said, "I have money to do another one." So he came back, and just this past Thursday, I believe, the students were building an aluminum one. I was down there helping them. So it's a lot of fun. And again, with unit planning, we're really working towards, again, the new learning standards and the implementation of those standards. So the challenge is for teachers to implement a unit this year using the new standards, and then moving forward next year to be near 100% inclusion of those new standards if possible. And we'll change common assessments as needed for that to happen. With the high school, we have been doing a lot. First of all, we've had a bunch of new staff, and we had some transfers. So I actually have four new staff members at North High out of 14, and that was just due to some turnover, a new hire. We had, because of the biomedical program and the interest of teachers wanting to teach it, they were all at North. So we had some staff members from North be transferred to South, and we had a South teacher move to North. So we had a little bit of change across our two high-school staffs. But we're strong, 14 at North and 11 at South. I actually met with them this afternoon, working on some adjustments to the longer block and how that's happening. So the biggest news at the high-school level is our biomedical program. And thanks to an increase in our budget last year, we were able to move forward with that. And we originally said it was going to be at South High, and then we originally said we would take 50 students at both South and North, so 50 across the district. And we actually have 108. We selected 109 students out of approximately 140 who applied. There are 108 enrolled out of the 109. The 109 students actually transferred out of district. So every student that we accepted came into the program. And that, again, we budgeted for 50 students, so we have 108 in the program. So that's definitely led to a few challenges this year. But with that being said, excuse me, we have offered the program to both CP1 and Honor students, and it's a mixed classroom. And what's really great is that as this year has progressed, a number of the CP1 students have actually elected to take the course at the honors level, so they are challenging themselves. I've visited most of the classrooms. I've had conversations with a lot of the students. Most recently, I had a conversation with a student at South High who said, who will remain unnamed, who said to me, "This is really hard." And I said, "Well, why is that?" And she said, "Well, it's really great, and it's really cool, and I'm learning a lot, and it's all real, but it's really hard." And that's been the conversation that we've had with students, is that they are elated to be in these classes. It's the first real true class that we've taught at an application level. Everything that we teach and everything that they learn is taught within the context of the real world. And so the school year started, it started with the students learning who Anna was, and there was actually a few saw on Twitter and also on the Voyager Express. Anna was a stuffed individual in some places. And come the second day of school, Anna was found in a crime scene. And there were several crime scenes set up across the two high schools. And most recently, the students have finally finished processing the crime scene. So, you know, they've been in school for a number of weeks, and they have spent this entire time processing that crime scene. And so now they're just moving into maybe some of the underlying causes of why Anna may have passed away. And so that'll continue throughout the year. And again, the whole idea is what has happened to Anna, so the entire year is based on that. Our teachers did attend two weeks of professional development at Stevenson University to learn about this course. Our teachers are committed and will take another two weeks of their summer to do the next professional development course at Stevenson next year. They go through the entire course from start to finish in those two weeks. They'll tell you it's probably two of the most intense weeks they've ever had, and they have to take tests, and they have to pass, and it's pretty intense. And they're a lot stronger and actually a lot better of a teacher as a result of that, they'll tell you. And what they've learned is carrying over into their other classes as well, so they're very happy about that. We're about to start budget planning for our second course. Our second course will be added next year for our sophomores. So we originally planned for 50 students. I told you we had 108. So the goal is that we'll plan for another 120 incoming freshmen. So we'll need to think about how to keep the 108 in it. How do we retain? Conversations I've had with students so far, they want to stay in it. They want to be in it. They love it. And I haven't heard any students who want to come out of it, so we'll see how that goes. We've also, as a result of the biomedical program, we have come together, we now have a community committee, of which Ms. Badger is part of. And the community committee is made up of 17 individuals, and we have representatives from BID Plymouth, we have representatives from Cape Cod Community, Bridgewater, we have the medical director from Mass Maritime, we also have representation from EMD Sirono, we have representation from BU. So there's quite a number of people who are on the committee, and we've met a few times. And our goal, as I have said to them time and time again, is our mission is commit to enrich. And that's the whole idea of the folks who are on this committee, is that we are there to do whatever we can to enrich the program. And so it's a matter of how do we go about doing that? And just most recently, we had a meeting, and the teachers had some real needs that they identified. And when I say real needs, one of the ways to enrich the program, the students, some of the students in one of the classes are really intrigued by wearing scrubs, and they think that there's a inherent, like, there's an interest. Kids are, teachers are buying some pairs here and there and giving them away as awards and prizes. So we reached out to the people in the community committee, and they said, you know, "If there are scrubs that are in your facilities that are not used, you know, that are new, that are sitting around, a lot of these facilities will get rid of things when dates expire, things like that, if you could pass them along to us." Our students need to learn how to suture. You know, they're not going to suture themselves. They're going to be suturing other cardboard together, you know, different fabrics together. But suturing needles that are used in hospitals are actually very expensive. And hospitals have major supplies of suturing needles, and they go unused. The ones that go unused expire, and they can't be used in the hospital setting after a certain time. So we've put out requests such as that to be used. So the community committee is really stepping forth. Just as an outside connection, we had someone from the community committee actually match up a mentoring relationship with one of our students in Science Fair. So that was a great addition as well. I also, through the ice bucket challenge, as you all know, you were involved, I challenged our biomedical students, and they all stepped up to the plate as well, so that was a fun thing to see. We've also had the challenge of teaching in the longer block at the high school. As you know, we moved to 78-minute classes, so we've been working towards sharing practices and what works best. And right now, I think we're going through some growing pains as to how we're pacing. And, you know, the teachers are kind of questioning, "Am I where I was last year?" And sometimes, that's a hard comparison to look at. And so they're really working at figuring out what should be on the mid-year and what should be on their final exam, and where are they in relation to where they need to be? So like I said, we're going through some growing pains, but for the most part, it's been positive feedback that's come back from that. And the science staff, a lot of them are saying, "Wow, I can take a breath." You know, the AP science, tremendous addition, if you're not aware. We went from, you know, our 47-minute every day. Our AP classes, like every other class, went to the 78-minute block, but science APs now meet every day, unlike other APs that just meet every other day. And the meeting every day has made a tremendous difference in the amount of information that the students can get at for each topic. So the depth is incredible, and teachers are just feeling so good about where they're at. So it's been a great addition. Common assessments, as I just mentioned, mid-years and finals, like I said, we're going through some growing pains and trying to figure out where we're at in regards to pacing. So hopefully, hopefully, we'll get that. Unit planning, we won't touch the biology. The biology MCAS is a graduation requirement. We will not touch that with new standards until a new assessment plan is worked out, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. But our other courses will pick up the use of the new standards. We moved ahead in Earth Science, and our Earth Science is using the new standards. They started this summer, and they enjoy it. They like the focus on climate change. They like the focus on human impact in the environment. At first, they were a little shocked that they weren't teaching the rock cycle, but that's okay. I said, "That's okay." Instead, they're learning about alternative energies and how humans are affecting our environment. So it's been a great, a great change for that. And then Science Fair, again, growing pains with Science Fair, moving it from a requirement to letting it be optional. You know, we went from having 120 students who were required to be there to having literally 10 students there last year. And the 10 students who were there wanted to be there. They were there because they elected to be there. It was solely their interest, something they wanted to do. And those 10 students, we had four of them go to regional, and of the four that went to regional, we had two that went to state, and both that went to state won awards. And just this weekend, Sophia O'Dong in Voyager Express presented at the Junior Science Symposium at MIT. So it's impressive, and this year, we'll have more students who want to volunteer to be there. I have already had many more students come up to me and come up to their teachers, and in the next few weeks, we'll actually have some solid numbers as to who that'll be. So we're looking forward to it. And, you know, it's just, it's a matter of time. With any change, things, you know, sometimes, numbers will go down, but then they'll come back up again. They know that there's a lot of opportunity, and for college-bound students, it's a great resume builder as well. Up here, by the way, on the right-hand side, if you've never seen, that's a hair under the microscope, and that was processed from the crime scene. On the lower left, you have students who are looking at body temperature. They were determining, these are all biomedical pictures, they were determining time of death of Anna, so they were taking a, as you know, when someone dies, they are able to take body temperature and determine time of death. So that's what students were doing in that case. There's a blood spatter analysis in the middle on the bottom. And then that's the picture of the crime scene that was at North High. Here, some of the teachers that are involved on the left-hand side, you have Mary Raymond, Jessica Mead, and Nancy Rozak. They actually, this is at Mass Maritime. They went up, the medical director there, Jeff came out and taught them how to suture their suturing pig's feet right there, so that they could then learn and be able to teach our students. And then on the right-hand side, that's our four teachers. Fay Dunn is the additional one in the pink. That is them getting their certificate, having passed all their tests at Stevenson this summer. Other items, the planetarium. With regard to the planetarium, Brian Claus has been in there now since last February. He's, you know, obviously, there's a learning curve involved, and it took us a long time to hire somebody for that position, being as unique as it is. And he did get a chance to see, coming in in February, learning, learning the program, learning the standards. He did see almost every third grader last year, so that was a really great thing for him. He already has most third, fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade students scheduled for this year as well, and he'll be moving on to learning the programs that are needed for grade seven, eight, and then he'll also get involved with K1, 2, and K1 and 2, I'm sorry. He's also taking in outside groups when possible, so we've had a couple of homeschool associations come in as well. And that's just because when our buses aren't available to move students, at the same time, he can be having some outside groups come in that we charge for. Framework adoption, I already mentioned. My fingers are crossed that it'll officially be done in January. And like I said, it just, again, kind of got stuck behind PARK. But everything else is moving forward. There was a brand-new edition of the framework, if you're interested in reviewing it. It was released by the Department of Ed September 22nd. The MCAS, the MCAS is staying, the MCAS in science, that's been the message. There were open forums that took place last spring. I attended those open forums. There were a couple of different themes that emerged from those open forums, one of which was testing more grades than 5, 8 in high school, doing potentially a grade-by- grade-by-grade assessment. There were other themes that involved the utilization of technology. So Dr. Sorenson, when you said that we did all this work for Park, the state science assessment folks are really taking note of what's happening. And a lot of districts made a huge effort to put a lot of technology into place. And potentially down the road, that science assessment could become more electronic in nature. And the point being with that, you can do more performance-based assessments more easily in a virtual lab setting online. And so there's always that potential. So as of right now, the MCAS is the MCAS is the MCAS and it's not, it's not changing in science for right now. And then social media, we, our teachers and our staff in science have really embraced social media. And there's a huge number of science staff who are using it, not just for biomedical, but every subject area. They're really utilizing Remind 101, if you don't know what that is. It's a great tool that teachers use that sends out reminders, oh, you have a test tomorrow, oh, you have homework. And by meeting every other day, it's becoming very handy for folks. Teachers are posting student work. Teachers last, I think it was last night, one teacher posted an answer key to some chemistry homework in preparation for a chemistry test today. So she gave the kids an opportunity to do the work. And then later on at night, she posted the answers so the students could check their work. With recruitment, you know, we're always going to recruit. We recruit for Science Fair. We recruit for Camp Invention. We recruit for, you know, biomedical, everything. So that's one of the ways that we're using social media. And you can follow those. We also, in the coordinator's office, I'll put a plug in for my colleagues, we've also recently started using Twitter in that capacity as well. And any questions or any feedback from anybody? You're welcome to take any.
I, I'm so thrilled with, my daughter's in the biomedical program and I can't even tell you how engaged she is, which I think is the key word to all of this.
Absolutely. Actively, very actively engaged.
And it is, when my oldest son went through the tech program in South, I always said, he always said, at least one or two periods a day, I know I'm going to take a class that I really enjoy and I look forward to. And I think that between that and allied health, that's, that's her thing. And it just is wonderful. And she does talk about how hard it is, but it doesn't matter because they are so anxious to get in and they're speculating on how Annie died. And it's just, it's just wonderful. So I, I'm thrilled for, I see it firsthand.
Good.
So I'm, I'm thrilled about that. And am I going to see you at the STEM conference this year? Are you, are you attending that?
Yes.
I'll be there as well.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Comments? Question?
Yes, go ahead.
It's always excellent. You can come three or four times a year. To wait for October.
I'm good, though.
We're in high-def now.
I believe my daughter is watching.
You had mentioned on the biomedical that the, the program's a screaming success, really, because you went from 50 to 108. How are we covering the, the over?
I, Mr. Costin and I have, have had many conversations this year. You know, our estimates were not that bad, believe it or not. Right now, we're, I, I've, I've used most of my high school budgets at this point in the year. But with that being said, most everything that we need for the year has already been purchased as well. So we're in some pretty good shape right now. We were, we were frugal on some things. Our, our teachers, when they attended the two-week professional development, there were a lot of things, because they're learning from teachers who teach the course, there were a lot of things that the teachers said, you know what, you need more of this. Do, don't invest in this. So we actually started a Google Doc when they were there over the summer, right when we were doing ordering. That was an open forum between them and I as to what they needed and what they didn't need. So that worked out very well in that process. Moving forward, as I'm preparing my budget for next year, one of the things that we did, just actually most recently today, was, and I, and I spoke to Dr. Campbell about this, is that our original projections, this time last year, we did a four-year projection because you're adding a new course each year. And when we did that, like I said, we did it for 50 students and going and looking at it now, we're looking at it from my perspective, we're only about $6,000 off. However, there's a significant piece, and that's with technology. One of the things that Project Lead the Way did not let us know that SED was not necessary was technology. Yeah, you're going to use it. But one of the recommendations when the teachers came back was that it was, it would be best served if it were in a one-to-one situation. And we're at a two-to-one, again, thanks to the four great folks over here. At the last minute in July, we were able to put together a Chromebook cart for use at South High with the biomedical program. But they're finding that with the two-to-one, it's good, but really to do the best job that they could do, it would be at a one-on-one, it would be at a one, it would be a one-to-one ratio. So that's some of the work that I'm doing and preparing my budget for this upcoming year and the conversations that I'll have with Mr. Costin and, and the team.
That's good because programs like that one and just about everything else you listed tonight, I think everybody sitting here wants to make sure that it's supported. We want to encourage it. We want to see it grow and we want to see it, so.
And, and one of the, one of the things, the elementary robotics rally, I, I mentioned and I've talked to Dr. Mastis about this, budgetarily speaking, one of the things that we would like to do is our grade four students have been using, they called a mechanical challenge in Lego Robotics. And we would like to move a more advanced system to them and the most advanced system to the grade five. So that's also something that we're looking at as well. So it's, at this point, it's just equipment and it's, it's to bring a, a greater level of sophistication to these programs. And, you know, in, in talking about the biomedical program, when we recruit for that program, we, we say, you know, we're not looking for all A-plus students. You know, we're looking for students who are going to give their all every day because the way the program is designed, you want students to continually give their best effort every day. You want them to fail. You want them to understand what that's like. The whole idea of trying to figure out, you know, how someone died is, is testing and retesting and testing again. And to make that happen, you need to have that internal drive to continue. And that's the type of student that we're looking for. And, and I reiterated that to our students who were telling me that it was hard. You know, I love it, but it's hard. Well, it's okay. You know, that's, that means you're thinking, that means you're doing something, so.
Very good. The, you're going to tell us this in a few weeks when we talk about your budget and everything, but books, are there any books or any other material requirements that you have? I heard maybe like chemistry books maybe lacking.
I just, I just, I just sent to Mr. Costin a few moments ago, one of the things, double, multitasking.
We were on the same wavelength.
What I put together, it might sound silly, but at the request, I put together an outlook through fiscal year '27. The College Board puts some stipulations on maybe AP courses, one of which is when you turn in your audit each year to teach the course, your book needs to be within 10 years of publication. So it doesn't seem like a whole lot, but as I explained today, if AP Physics, there's only one really good book. It's Ge and Cooley Physics. And it's a 2005 edition and we bought it in 2007. The book is only eight years old to us. It's in pretty good condition. But right now, it's at 10 years and it needs to be replaced. And it's a $161 book. And that $161 book, to have 50 copies of it at each high school, comes at a $17,000 cost to the district. So when I put together that outlook through fiscal year '27, what drove that is where the AP classes fall in line. And thankfully, they all fall kind of in a different year. So I put AP classes in where they would need to be repurchased, replaced between now and then. And then looking at courses such as forensics. It's a course that changes more often than not. And kind of putting that course on a 10-year cycle as well. But putting a course, and no offense to anatomy and physiology, but doesn't change as much, we'll say, putting a course like that on a 15-year cycle. So I put that out and plotted that out for Mr. Costin so he could kind of see what subjects would be required when. And coming up, the only significant one this year would be that physics AP, believe it or not, because that's the only one that we, if we want to be in line with what the College Board recommends, then that would be due.
Would we go with more of digital?
With every book adoption, there is a digital version. However, when you get to the, the higher, like the AP Ge and Cooley book is, is one of the best and most difficult, it's actually a higher ed book. It's a college textbook. And there are not as many online perks as there are at a high school book because it's, it's the, it's the type of student that they're catering to. And so it's not, you know, the bells and the whistles and, and making, you know, the book walk across the stage. You know, I mean, that's, that's what the high school textbooks typically do, where the college textbook's not as much. But whenever that's available, yes, we were actually, the biology book we're currently using was the first adoption in the district where we did a digital adoption. And that's been going very well. And part of the cycle that I included to Mr. Costin was in six years, that online portion will need to be renewed. So we'll need to take that into consideration.
Okay. Very good. Anybody, Ms. Badger?
Well, I don't have a question, but I did, at the Alumni Association, you shared with us and you shared with us at our, the meeting of the Bio Steering Committee or whatever it's being called, you shared with us the fact that, you mentioned AP and this is what triggered it, that there might be some sort of certification that these students might be getting and I thought you might want to share that.
So Project Lead the Way, which is who we belong, we belong to that organization, is part of the biomedical program. Project Lead the Way and the AP College Board entered into an official partnership last spring. And this partnership is essentially, as they delineate kind of what goes with what. So with the biomedical program, it would be my assumption that AP Bio and AP Chemistry would be together with that. So if a student, hypothetically speaking, did the four years of biomedical and did AP Bio and did AP Chemistry, when they left high school, if they were successful, they received a three or higher in the AP scores, they passed their end-of-course exams in biomedical, then there would be a, an additional endorsement that these students would receive from the College Board and from Project Lead the Way that they could take with them as they move on to college and apply and whatnot. So that's in, that's above us, that's being worked on among the two organizations.
Very good. Any other questions?
No.
Very good. Thank you very much. It was a great update. Oh, I'm sorry. I did have one more question.
Oh, gee.
But it ties into what Mr. Montron's going to talk about in a few minutes. So you meant, you touched on the planetarium. And in our capital outlay, there is a request for digitizing the, the equipment, I guess, there for $230,000. Can you just take a second, tell me why you need it?
Absolutely. So our planetarium currently has the old star projector, the ball. So if you've ever seen it come up out of the elevator, and every time it comes up out of the elevator, we cross our fingers that it's going to come up out of the elevator, it is original to this building. And the star ball, as, as old as it is, it's, it's an amazing piece of technology, believe it or not. That ball is made up of lenses and mirrors. And there is a bulb inside of that. And through our service contract, we actually get one ball every two years. So near the end of the second year, some stars become a little bit more dim than others. And that ball is, is great, but there comes a limit. So you can go in there and you can see the stars. And you can see an archaic moon and an archaic sun move across the planetarium. And that's about it. There are also planets that are attached to the star ball that you can see. But again, that's about it. And the planets are a red dot or a little bit of a blue dot. And, and that's where it is. Over the years, we have added LCD projectors in there. We've added a high-def LCD projector. And we have done that to make it be more exciting. Here, I can show you the dot that looks like Mars in the sky. And then I'll switch to the HD projector. It takes me a minute or so to switch from the star ball to the projector. But when I get Mars up there, and we have iPads in there as well, that you can zoom in and Mars becomes, you know, 80% of the dome. And that's fascinating. And that's really what gets kids interested in what's happening. Like I mentioned, you know, no offense, the textbook walking across the stage. You know, you want to make it have bells and whistles. Digitizing the planetarium takes the star ball out. The star ball would leave, the elevator would leave, the hole we would cover, and a digital projector would go in that spot. And that digital projector would actually cover the entirety of the dome. And what that digital projector does is it allows more plug-and-play features. You can still have the sky and you can still manipulate the stars and everything that it currently does. But now, if you've ever gone into the Hayden Planetarium and Science Museum to see a show, you know, we took our, our children there to see the Sesame Street Live show, you know, and Big Bird and Cookie Monster are out in the sky. And you can do shows like that. And so you, you get the digital projector and then you have the ability to do everything you've done before and more. And you can also purchase and use these canned programs, we'll call them. And so up to this point, in order to have someone work in the planetarium, they not only needed to know astronomy, but they needed to have a certain level of aptitude when it came to running the equipment in there. And we have tube projector lamps that have constellations on them that need to be manipulated. So there's a lot of, the, the manipulation of equipment, there's been a huge learning curve. And so we've been limited in that regard. When you get the digital planetarium, you still need the astronomy background, but it's like running a computer now. And if you've used a telescope in recent years, you know that you can take that telescope and you can say, find Polaris and it, you know, and it'll find Polaris for you and there it is. It's that sort of idea. And not only will it do science and astronomy, but it has the ability to bring in, and do interdisciplinary programs. So you can do Native American tales. You can do biology and cells. Because it's now a projection unit on a 60-foot dome, 30-foot dome with 60 seats in it, you have that ability to use it. You have the ability to, to create revenue as well. And you have that because, again, you can have a, a pre-canned show that you can purchase for a certain amount of money and you can show it X number of times and charge admission. And certainly you need to have somebody there, like you would with the PAC manager or anybody that we have working in the district on that sort of thing. But you can have someone in there doing that type of activity and, and bringing in revenue in that capacity. So that cost, that $230,000 cost is associated with the removal of the equipment, the digital planetarium, an LED lighting system. And I believe the labor's included in that cost as well. The quote was attached to the capital information.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm glad I asked. Sounds like a great update.
You're welcome.
Oh, we wanted a break. You know what? I totally forgot until I saw the paper moment again. So we need a break. So five-minute break?
Yep.
Five minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay. We're going to adjourn five minutes. Okay. We're gonna adjourn five minutes.
Thank you.
Replace all of the exterior windows at Federal Furnace School in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-six dollars. I had some questions on this one in the past week that went back to the building and they're still researching what that cost actually was, because it didn't... It didn't really seem like it was going to include all of the windows.
This number's too low?
We are waiting on some more information on that.
We think it's too low?
I think it's too low.
Yeah.
The seventeenth project is to resurface some paving areas over at the middle school. That's really in the bus loop, the top of the bus loop, and an area in the parking lot that needs some seal coating. So, I'm sorry, some crack filling. The eighteenth project is to replace some carpeting at the middle school. This is in computer labs and some offices that are off of the computer labs. The nineteenth project is to add two card readers to PCIS, two exterior doors. The twentieth is to refurbish and refinish some wooden floors at Nathaniel Morton in the amount of eighty-four thousand, eight-hundred dollars. Those we actually chip away at each summer with our carpenter. He does a couple of floors each summer. This would've sped that up a little bit. The twenty-first project is to replace carpeting with vinyl tile at the IMC here at PCIS. You know, we did a big carpet replacement project last summer. Twenty-second is to replace curtains in all the classrooms here at PCIS with vertical blinds in the amount of fifteen thousand, forty-two dollars. And the last is to do some renovation work to the field here and add some sod in the amount of fifty thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And those are the building repairs and renovations being submitted. We also have vehicles and equipment in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars to replace five vehicles. The first vehicle is our trash compacting truck. That is in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. That trash compacting truck is used every single day to pick up dumpsters at all of the schools and bring them for disposal. It is a two-thousand-and-four vehicle this past year. The bed of the compactor rotted out and we had the truck down for probably close to a month while we found somebody to weld some plates into the compactor itself to get it going. It's got a ton of miles on it and it's ready to go. If we are able to replace that vehicle, I probably wouldn't get rid of that vehicle. I would set it aside and use it for compacting cardboard, which is another issue that we have. The DPW currently goes around to the schools to pick up the cardboard. It's an imposition on them and they've had issues with their compacting truck this year where we actually lent them our truck over a couple of weekends to make their runs because of issues, they're having the same issues with their trucks. The next vehicle is to replace my truck nine-forty-six, which is a dump truck with a plow and sander in the amount of forty-five thousand, six-hundred. And the next is to replace nine-forty-five at the same dollar amount. Fourth truck is to replace a food service box truck in the amount of forty thousand dollars that's used to deliver food across the district. And the last is a request from Technical Studies for a passenger van to transport students to and from job sites.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Through the chair. On the plowing and sanding, those, we have only had, how many of those do we have?
We have six trucks.
Because last year, we, as you, you know, we really ran them into the ground.
Yes.
So, these are replacing, what year, what year are we replacing here?
These are, the nine-forty-six is a nineteen-ninety-nine and the nine-forty-five is a two-thousand-and-six. The two-thousand-and-six is in really tough shape. What happens is the salt creates a problem in the undercarriage with the hydraulics, with the wiring. Nine-forty-six, the entire bed rotted out on us this, this last couple of months. We've put a wooden bed on the back to get us through the...
Where I was going, where I was going with my question is we have, we have six of them. If we lose two of them, we're going to be in a tough, if we have another winter like last year, we're going to be...
We had a plan.
Say again?
We have a plan.
Oh, good.
Our plan was that as we replaced the skilled craftsmen's vehicles over the last few years, we've purchased trucks with plows. So, we do have a little bit of backup. We do have a mechanic that during the, during the storms, he's out plowing with us and if something happens, we've been pretty fortunate.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, it's, last year wasn't a fun year.
I'm glad you can talk about it now.
Sorry you didn't want to talk about it.
No, there could be more to come. The last two projects are bonded projects that were on here last year. They had to replace the roof at West Elementary in Indianbrook after the HVAC replacements. West Elementary is down... Yeah, West Elementary is down is one-million-seven-hundred, one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, eight-hundred and Indianbrook is one-million-three-oh-six-eight-oh-three. That's similar to what we did here at PCIS after the HVAC project. As I said, last year, they're still in fairly decent shape. We made it through last winter pretty well, other than chewing up some lightning rod cable with snow blowers, but have to do what you have to do. But the roofs themselves held up pretty well. We didn't have too-too bad a leaking issue. And these are on there to keep everybody informed that as we move forward, we need to do something with the roofs at all of the schools that were doing the HVAC projects. Does any questions?
Good.
Happy to try and answer them.
So now, this list is going to go in front of the capital outlay?
Yes.
And, yeah. Is there anything on the deferred that... The twenty-three you're recommending are, so I probably shouldn't even ask, but I will anyway. Is there anything on the deferred that you feel should, should have been up on the top?
All of it.
Yeah. All of it, I shouldn't have asked.
No, I mean, I, I go through when I'm trying to prioritize these, I take into account what we typically get for capital outlay. To go through and put in another four-million-six-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of projects into a capital list is, is a big waste of everybody's time.
Right.
It's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
So, we look at what's on the list and we try and prioritize them as best we can. We come before you to, to get guidance and wisdom on whether or not we have the right mix. And from here, we go to the Capital Outlay Expenditures Committee and it goes through the town manager and funding's assigned and we go ahead and move on with projects.
Anybody have any questions? Anything you want to follow up on, on the list? It was a long list. So, I think we're good then. Did, Dr. Maestis, did you want to...
Nope, this is an action item.
This is an action item. So, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll... Move that we accept the recommendations for the capital improvement expenditure committee to go.
Do I have a second? Dr. Sorenson seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also do bring with us to Capital Outlay the five-year plan.
Yep.
Which is an ongoing spreadsheet that just gets bigger and bigger each year.
But the software that we implemented a few years ago, it's still useful? I mean, helps to generate this?
Yes, actually, if you, if you were to look at that list, a lot of them say building requests. I'm in the process of going back and putting the infrastructure numbers to that. I just didn't have enough time before this meeting. All of this is in the infrastructure report somewhere.
Okay.
I just have to go back and dig through each school and find out which...
Where they are.
Number it was, but they're all in there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have a series of Massachusetts Association of School Committee resolutions for the conference in Hyannis in November?
Yes.
Early November, right.
In November. So, we have a series of them. I think there's seven, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I have a paper came proposed.
So, why don't we just walk through these and see what everybody thinks? Dr. Maestis has made a recommendation on each one of these, so why don't... How would you like to do it? You want to...
I can go over them and then...
Tee them up or...
I can do that. The first resolution is to form a commission to investigate an opinion development for start times for high schools. I think a lot of you are familiar with what school districts have done, some research regarding adolescents and high school students and start time. I think what MASC would like to do is create a, suggest to the state that a commission be created to actually investigate how that would impact schools, to possibly bring forward to implement that across the state. So, this resolution is to look at supporting a commission that would investigate that for the state.
And you're recommending that?
I, you know what? Let's see what it says. I think we all know.
Yeah.
Again, there are some inherent issues that happen when you start moving high school schedules around.
The buses.
And I think that would come out in the commission.
Yeah, the buses.
And I, and I know you have put this already on our own advocacy list of things to look at.
Yeah.
So, would you like to...
I, I think Silver Lake is, is doing research right now to explore it as well, so maybe we can tap into some of that information. I recently had a conversation and I sent an article from the New York Times to Chairman Bagley. I had a conversation with Dr. Gaskon. He's a pediatric neurologist. I was there for, you know, with one of my kids and he had said that if a student has a three-hour time difference between school days and weekends as to when they get up in the morning, they're sleep deprived, which I thought was really an interesting take on it. And he forwarded me some information, which I forwarded as well. That seems to be something that his association and organization was looking at. Like, he asked questions like, what time do you wake up on weekends? What time do you wake up on weekdays? And if there's that big of a gap, then that's considered. I know that his organization or association is extremely committed to looking at this, so I'm, you know, I'm just as curious.
We can solve that. We'll just get them up on the weekends at six.
Yeah. There you go. I almost told them that you said that.
I hope part of it...
So, I actually support exploring it.
I know Duxbury did, did it a few years ago and I know they've, you know, that there's some things that have developed because of it, but I think, yeah.
Athletics are going to be impacted. I mean, there's stuff on the other end that's going to be, there's a lot to consider.
It seems like it, it needs to be, if not at the state level, then a regional level, because if you're the only school district that implements it and all the surrounding ones don't, what do you do for sports and everything? Throw all the schedules off?
Buses, yeah.
Buses kill it every single time.
The buses is what really gives it for...
Yeah.
Unless you move everybody up.
One of the first districts, and I was still a high school principal at the time, one of the first area districts that did this was Hingham. And I remember having this conversation with, with the high school principal and her comment was, I said, "Well, how did you deal with the buses?" She's like, "Pam, we don't deal with the same bus issues that you do." You know, like, it really was. They don't need, they don't have the same need for the buses for that secondary run. She goes, "And those that do, what they did was they set up time in the cafeteria where some kids could go in and do some homework. The bus would come back after the elementary run, but there were so few kids dealing with that." Because a lot of our kids had their own car, so it wasn't an issue.
And there's less...
Duxbury's dealing, you know, so there are districts that are far different.
Right. Here, we're so spread out.
And just the number of, sheer number of buses we have.
Yeah.
That's a significant difference in what you're doing. You literally almost just switch your elementary and high school.
We like a regional, but we don't get the regional funding.
But even if you had the buses and if by some miracle you could work out the scheduling, who are you playing sports with? You know, they've already started, you know, like, they want to, they're going to be on an earlier schedule than you're going to be on, right?
You make it work. Because a lot of them, you're dealing with a lot of night games now.
Some games start at five.
Many of them are at night, so that's an easy, because of lights.
Schedule accordingly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, like, when we played Dennis, no, what is...
Nussit has it.
All the way, no, Nussit.
Nussit has it, yeah.
It would have to be a much later time because of travel time and all that.
And they're up later.
They have that schedule and they make that travel every single day and they make it work.
So, we need to, we've got to take one motion at a time, so...
Please.
I think studying this doesn't hurt anybody.
Right.
So, I think that as a committee, we should move that we, we, who's our delegate to this? Who's our delegate? So, that on your first ballot, that you vote in favor of this as a resolution one, that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion, we have it second by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Resolution two is, let me, oh, this is for...
Yeah, this one was so broad.
Right.
Let's rebuild the world.
Yeah, really. It was even hard to get your brain around it.
Yeah. Although I support the premise, the resolution would put major stress on our already at-capacity school buildings, because if we were to look at, I mean, we're going through the whole issue right now of looking at full decay, we're taking the capacity of our buildings out, which now if we look at implementing preschool mandatory, then it creates another issue. So, I, I think it's something that's, it's a great thing to do, but unfortunately, I think it's going to create a great deal of capacity issues for schools around the, around the commonwealth.
I, I agree. When I was reading this, a few of them, I'm going to have the same comment. They're just overreaches where nothing productive is going to come out of that. So, do, yes, definitely.
On, I, I've never been the voting delegate, well, like, before, so, you know, I can just vote no for us, but if you want me to speak on the issue, just if I could just request some talking points, maybe, or I, maybe I just keep my motion and just...
Yeah, usually you don't.
No, on, on any of these, the first, the first go-around...
Yeah.
You vote the way the, the committee has voted.
Okay.
Based on conversation.
If then there's a, a second vote or a follow-up vote or some...
An amendment.
Amendments made to the motion.
Speak to the motion.
Then you can, you know, we trust you.
Okay.
Yeah, just base it on what you do.
Well, I don't know if you wanted me to speak to the motion, then if you do, I'm happy to do that as long as you provide me with some talking points.
I think the biggest issue for us that you would really speak to that would put any kind of restriction for Plymouth...
Yeah.
Is sheer capacity.
Right.
And, and funding for capacity.
Okay.
And, and then the MSBA gets involved. I mean, we're, we're not going to build anything unless MSBA is going to contribute, so it's, it's a funding issue.
Okay.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we vote no on resolution number two.
And Mr. Morgan?
I second that motion.
And any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Okay.
All right, the next one is, we really haven't seen this problem too much in our district, but it's really, a lot of school districts have seen this where students are, are somewhat counseled out of their school prior to and after MCAS is taken, so that the school that they transfer to actually gets a test score. So, it really gives an unfair reading of, of how well that school is doing. And I think when you, when you look at some of the inner-city schools and some of the suburb-type opportunities, this is, this is an issue. You know, it doesn't really impact us here in Plymouth, but I think as a whole, when we do get students that transfer in, their scores come to us and then they're reflected on our score, overall score. So, we do have them from time to time, but it's not a prevailing issue for us here in our district. It, it does happen from time to time.
One of the questions I had was the October first date. What if they transferred on October second? So, you really had them the whole year or, you know, or the, the other end of the spectrum? There are some place, you know. It seemed like the date, like, I would have thought that it would have been based on a percentage of the school year. Like, how much of the percentage of the school, who had the greater, who had, who had the child for the greatest amount of time for the school year, then that should be the, you know, the one that had the influence over the child's education, right, for the tests?
You'd think.
And I was, I was looking to understand that, because I, I would have thought you were going to...
Oh.
Tell me why. Why, why October first? What's the significance of, why are they making a point out of October first and not taking a percentage of the school year?
October first is the date that the child is officially connected to a school district.
Right.
For chapter seventy reimbursement.
Yeah.
And that has to happen, because I think the next one talks about the chapter seventy.
Yes.
And it says again, October first, so that's the magic date?
Yeah. Ms. Hunt has a question.
Mrs. Hunt.
Is some of this coming from, and I know the president of the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association, this is a hot topic for them, is some of that coming from like the ELL students or the students that are home in the district?
Yes, absolutely.
And they're moving out? And when I met with Senator Warren, this was a huge topic for discussion and it's, it was skewing the results so bad...
Yes.
That it was just, we, you have eczema, you know, a month with a student and you have language barriers and all that, so I, I believe that's where it's coming from, correct?
It was submitted by Framingham, which Framingham is...
Which is where she's from.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Yeah.
But it's not really applicable to us.
Not, not, not like it is in some of these other districts.
It's more a different type of district. Do we have a motion then on this one?
Course's recommendation.
I, I supported it, because I think...
Because they, it's important to them.
Once in a while, it does impact us.
It's applicable to us, but you never know. It could be.
Yeah, things change.
Yeah, but not in the numbers where it's going to have any impact.
Right now.
It wouldn't affect our numbers. I mean, we would have to have a radical...
Yes.
Yes, a lot of, yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm moved to support it.
One second.
And seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
All right, the, the next resolution, resolution four is to revisit the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Act for appropriate funding. Right now, McKinney-Vento, we do get some funding, but it's nowhere near, doesn't match the amount of dollars that districts have to put out. So, this is looking at revisiting that whole topic of McKinney-Vento reimbursement and looking at, at having a, a better formula to be able to reimburse districts for what they incur for expense.
Mm-hmm.
And I support the resolution.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we support resolution number four.
Dr. Sorenson seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous.
The, the next resolution, I, I'll, I'll read my comments and I, I was opposed initially without knowing the specifics of the ballot question. I find it difficult to support the resolution, so I, I did not support it. Tonight, I received an actual constitutional amendment that has been filed and Donna Ramsey provided it to me this evening, because she got her hands on a copy of the initiative and I'd like to read it for you. It's an initiative petition for a constitutional amendment and the summary reads, "This proposed constitutional amendment would establish an additional four percent state income tax on the portion of annual taxable income in excess of one million dollars. The income level would be adjusted annually to reflect increases in the cost of living by the state method used for federal income tax brackets. Revenues from this tax would be used, subject to appropriation by the state legislature, only for public education, public colleges and universities, the repair and maintenance of roads, bridges and public transportation. The proposed amendment will apply to tax years beginning on or after January first, 2019." So, it's, it's looking at if you make over a million dollars, it would be a four percent tax. That tax would be applied for public education, roads, bridges, transportation for the commonwealth. So, that's what this, it would be something of that nature.
So, on this one, I didn't think that, I thought it went way too far and it didn't really, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, that forum, I don't think was the right place to be talking about infrastructure, roads and bridges and I just think it went too far. It's too broad and for me personally, this one I wouldn't support. Any further discussion here?
Just, just a comment. I, I, I'd feel more comfortable if it was for education, but knowing that there's a significant movement in the state right now for the Boston transportation system, I don't know how, what the formula would be to actually take the four percent, how much of that four percent would actually be applied to, to, to public schools, colleges, and I mean, there's a lot here to fund.
That's a lot, yeah, that's a lot. They could decide to do, do all the imploding bridges.
Yes, sorry. I was just like, sorry, can we make an amendment? Like, could we send Ms. Hunt with an amendment to that?
Then you better give her some...
Absolutely.
I mean, if we just did it for education, because your point about the MBTA and all the, just the infrastructure that's going towards them is, I mean, it's removing it from higher education, I mean, where I work, we had funding stopped for a building, so...
Or, or, to Mr. Campbell's point, or unidentified percentage.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, like...
Fifty percent of said four percent, yeah.
Half of a half.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
How far in advance do we have to submit admin? Do we have to submit them prior?
Do it on the floor.
Do it on the floor, yeah.
You can?
That was the rep last year.
Do you have an amendment? Do we send an amendment? Was it an easy thing to do for an amendment?
I didn't do one, but it was even for other folks to do.
Okay.
To, to that point, Ms. Hunt, I, I, I do believe that there will probably be people of the same mindset.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, maybe listen to the discussion and then be prepared, you know.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion? Everybody's shy. Give me a motion.
I, I mean, I don't even...
Just a vote on the vote.
So...
We'll give her direction to...
So, I move that we, yeah, we, we trust Ms...
Dylan's trusting.
That we vote...
No position.
Yeah.
We vote no position on resolution five.
I like that, that's better.
Unless clarified by...
Can we do that, like an abstained and then amend?
Well, you could, if I may, through you.
Yeah, sure.
That's why I didn't say anything.
You could vote to not have a position, but yet leave it up to Mrs...
Yeah.
Ms. Hunt.
That's the plan.
Based on conversation.
Yes, based on our discussion, yep.
So, I, you know, basically we feel it's not baked and it, it overreaches.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would personally vote no either way, so I don't know how we're going to word the motion, but...
I would also. I don't think it's the right forum, forum to do what they're trying to do.
Then make a motion to vote.
Yeah, then make a motion. Then I can vote, I can vote no, if that's what we want.
I make a motion not to support this resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
On a question?
Yep.
I'll, I'll support the motion, but I think the understanding is that amendments to this motion will be put on the floor, I would imagine.
Yes.
And you, you're free to, you know, speak to those amendments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Favor given.
And one opposed?
I don't, I don't really know where I am. I'm not for it, but I'm not against it, so no. Yeah, I'll abstain.
So we have one abstention.
Hold on one second. We have one abstention and that's...
In a direction that's gonna be favorable.
Ms. Badger?
You don't want extra taxes.
Everybody else in favor?
Yeah, no, see, that's where...
Right, well, doubling their income tax now.
Yeah.
Yes. Who did second? Oh, Mrs. Burgess.
I did, yeah. I had to get it moving.
We're doing good.
Yeah, we are.
We're fine, let's... Next one.
The next one is resolution number six and it's, it's a proposal to have a member of MASC sit on the Board of Education for the Commonwealth, which I think is a great idea.
I'll make the motion that we support resolution number six.
One second.
Ms. Badger seconded it? And under further discussion, I'll just say, this sounds fine. I just don't like that the way in which the board is being proposed to be formulated. I don't like, the only one, by the way, where they're talking about multiple nominees for a position is the school committee representative. So you'd be able to pick between three nominees. All the other ones, it's an appointment. Go ahead, yeah.
I was involved, so the one that says nominees provided by the Massachusetts Parent Association, I was involved in actually making that a law. And that is three nominees.
Yes, that's what I said.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said that the school committee wasn't on...
No, no. What I said was, those are the only ones that are. The other one is like, there'll be one nominee provided by the Massachusetts State Labor Council. So there's one nominee, when there's no election, is not really a nominee to me. So if they floated multiple names on each one of these, I could probably live with this a little more. One representative of business or industry selected by the governor with a demonstrated commitment to education. It's gonna be the governor's appointment. I would rather have a few names floated there.
Isn't it worded a list?
Whereas the only one that does say it is one representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. See what I'm saying?
But it, but it says, it says that way for the PTA too, but it is a list of three. It's just worded, I think it's worded wrong. Because it says, "From a list of one nominee provided by the Massachusetts Parent-Teacher Association," we have to give three names. And this, it's worded one nominee, but we have to give three. So my guess is that it's not written correctly. We have to give, we just had somebody appointed in this last...
Then the wording definitely... It could, it changes the whole meaning of the thing.
Yeah, but I do know that, I know that the PTA is three, they have to give three names to the governor.
Okay, but it doesn't say that here. So what are we voting on here to support?
I guess putting a school committee member on the...
And I, I think the rest of this, I'm, am I talking out of turn?
No, no, no.
I think the rest of this is already the way it's set up. Do you know what I mean? I think it's, that's, that's the structure now.
Right.
The only thing is we're adding this one.
We're only adding the school.
So everything that's in here now, we're not voting for that. That's already in place.
No attempt to change the origin, the current structure.
It's just adding one of us.
One person, just adding one.
That's how I read it.
Yep.
Is that how you read it too? All right. Go ahead.
And will that person have to resign from their position on the local school committee?
That would be weird.
Because the, the PTA, the PTA person we brought forth was a school committee member in Lexington and she had to resign.
That'd be weird.
So I'm just curious.
What would be the intent, though?
It can be on both at the same time.
You left a school committee member, but then they're not a school committee member? That would just be weird.
That's an appointed position.
Right, because we're...
It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
It's an appointed position.
So that's a lot for somebody then. That's a lot. It's a lot of meetings.
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Okay, I, I can live with that then, if everybody's... So we have no power to change the other points of this.
I think it's only emboldened that's changing.
Well, it's only emboldened that they're proposing to change as part of this resolution. Correct?
Yeah.
But is it actually the right wording? Because where Ms. Hunt says they have a list of three nominees, so is it, if we vote yes, we're voting yes on incorrect information? If that's not how it's actually listed.
But our part is written correctly, or the part that we're voting on.
Our part is, yeah.
So that's the only thing that we care about? We don't care about the rest of it?
The others, what if it's already there?
What she's saying is that, from her understanding of how the PTA representative has selected the language within...
The PTA. Yeah. Therefore, we vote on...
Yeah, that's it. The only revision is the, is the italicized. Obviously, the language they got, if you say it's not correct, it's probably transcribed wrong.
Yeah, we have to give three names.
Okay.
Well, anyway, the motion is whether, whether the, whether some of the details are off or not. The motion is that we support resolution six to add a member, a school committee member.
To the state board.
That's what the motion's all about.
Yeah.
And we had discussion, any further discussion? Then all those in favor? Unanimous on that one? I'm trusting you than the wording. And the last one?
Believe me, we had a governor that refused.
Yeah.
The last one is the, the school committee official voting delegate to MASC be authorized to vote at the MASC Annual Business Meeting on behalf of the Plymouth School Committee in support of resolution seven relative to the teaching strategies gold assessment for kindergarten students. Again, we already, the district, we have a number of assessments that we offer our students and this is looking to adopt another assessment to be given to students, which is the gold assessment for kindergarten students. So basically, it's adding another assessment to be offered to kindergarten. And I, I voted, I, I would... The language in here, from my recommendation, is incorrect. I, I do not support this resolution. It says there, I support it, I, I do not support it. If you read my language, the district office...
Right, it says I support this resolution.
Yeah, I don't support it.
And you don't support it because...
Because we already have a variety of assessments that we offer in our district for placement and for, for student assessment for, at the kindergarten level.
Isn't that what they're saying? They're saying they don't want the TS gold. I thought that's why you were agreeing with it. Therefore, be it resolved that Mass urge the Department of Early Education and Care and the Department of... No, I read the last one wrong, so...
End the mandate.
To end the mandate that districts...
Yeah, I support this.
Okay.
I wrote any extra names.
I read two in a row wrong.
I did these last week, so a lot of stains in my life since last week.
Do we have a motion on this one?
I move that we support resolution number seven.
And seconded by Mrs. Burgess.
Okay, so we have Ms. Badger and Ms. Burgess.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So, just to reiterate, so you're only held on the first round of votes?
Right.
And then we trust you to amend or argue of a... According to... Very good. Home education plan.
Yes, tonight, we have three home educate, uh, three home education plans are here for your approval. They have been reviewed by Mr. Hal, Dr. Halpin's office and need the guidelines set for the high school committee approval.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the home education plans as presented.
Mr. Morgan seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. School fundraisers, anybody have anything they'd like to, Ms. Badger?
I just have a question about the, the first one on the list. That was the end, date was August sixth. And we still don't have any gross receipts or net receipts. I'm just wondering how that's going.
I can say, not specifically to this one, but there has been a friendly reminder sent out to all of our fundraisers regarding the gross and net receipts. And this one in particular was to pay for the, the costs of the scravages and shirts and materials. But information is being sought after.
I figured they'd already spent the money, so I was like, hmm.
Time limit is not...
Anything else on that one? All right, then any reports and proposals from committee members? Yes, Ms. Hunt?
I just wanted to say that I attended the college fair last week and I know a few other people were there. And it was, it was wonderful. I, I'm hoping to make a suggestion that it could be spread out a little bit more next year.
Physically spread out.
Packed, absolutely packed. It was a huge turnout. My son chose to go to that instead of a soccer game, so it was a big turnout. It was really important, I know, to us to be there. And I think that had it been spread out a little bit more, he, he came with a, we went with a list and we only hit the schools on our list because it was so crowded that once we hit our list, we left. We didn't really explore anything off the list. And I think it's wonderful that it gets to the point that it's that packed. I don't know if it's because it's both schools combined. But I think that it was even the amount of colleges that were there, it wasn't necessarily the people. So if we can expand it into the hallway or the cafeteria or something next year, that's the only thing that I found to be a problem.
That's a, that's a good idea, maybe like...
It used to be in the cafeteria and in the gym.
It was, you couldn't walk.
I didn't remember doing it in the cafeteria.
Because I was always in the gym and then half of it was in the...
I like the hallway idea.
The foyer.
I mean, because when you go to UMass Boston and, and the kids go through all their, they have them in the hallway. So they have all that room. You just, you just file right on down through the hallway and even go upstairs and go down that hallway.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say to, to this, we'll be at North next year. We alternate.
Okay.
Each year. We don't do two because it's a lot on the colleges, obviously, to have them come out twice. It's, we get a great, actually, I think we had a reduction in participation this year, so...
Oh.
Imagine if it was even grander than you saw when you went. So that's something definitely, regardless of the site, whether it's north or south, you know, things to consider with the New South High School too, once we go back there. But really to spread that out into sort of, you don't want to spread out too much because you want people to be aware of everything and not to overlook something. But we can certainly look at how that's set up to just make it as, as user-friendly so that people can, I think, get around in an efficient manner, yeah.
Ms. Badger?
I have to piggyback, I don't know if you're done, but I just have some college fair. I thought it was great. I represented my school, like I do almost every year and, yes. So from the booth perspective, I heard from a couple of people that the space was a little bit tight. And I realize you're trying to cram all those schools in, but some people, especially like a smaller school like myself, next to two fairly large schools, you get lost. And not just to talk about, you know, my undergrad, but I'm sure it happened to a couple of other schools that are small and you're near, you know, you're next to Syracuse and there's twelve people around Syracuse and your booth is completely covered. So people miss you as you go by. But that's not as big of a deal. But the small space, I think, just to put your materials down was difficult to fit everything in. But I did have one comment from a parent and everybody was raving about how great it was. People from Duxbury, kids from Bourne, I talked to kids. So it was nice to see people coming from other towns who maybe didn't have that opportunity, so it was nice. But the one thing I did hear is I talked to actually one parent of a student who's in the plumbing program and her and her son came because he's a junior and they were looking for opportunities for him for higher education. And they didn't, we didn't have anything for him. And so she was just hoping that maybe there were other schools that weren't on the list that were sent home or that she saw. But she did have that suggestion. I thought that was a pretty good one. And I know that Mr. Hannah's focus is getting some of those connections and he has some of those and it would have been nice to have some of them have booths at the school. Just a little.
Yes, and I completely agree, we've had that conversation in the past too, that, you know, we want to make sure that we're mindful of all of our post-secondary aspirations of our students, particularly those that perhaps aren't typically represented at those college fairs. So that's something that we certainly need to reach out and, and get as much participation as we possibly can.
Go ahead.
They also do school visits. And they take, they do take busloads of kids to some of the vocational, post-secondary schools. So that's another opportunity that we take advantage of.
Yeah, and I told her about that when she said, when she, and she knew her son was like six years older her older son. And so she knew all about it, but she was just like, oh, it would have been nice to talk one-on-one and be there with my son when he was talking.
Right, right. So for that parent, the parent and student opportunity, that, that may not be the case. I was also gonna sort of piggyback on what Dr. MASC said in terms of, we also encouraging schools to come visit during the day. A lot of colleges have come in during lunchtimes and, you know, creating opportunities for, for, for students to, to have some more intimate...
Which is nice.
Opportunities as well. So there may be another avenue for our vocational, technical, perhaps even though that the fair has, has come and gone, that there are other opportunities as well to continue to move forward with.
Thank you.
I went myself with my daughter and I found it, I was proud that we put on something like that. That, you guys did a great job. That was, it was amazing. I, I thought, for the little schools, it's true, it got congested on the really popular schools. Everybody was clustering around those tables. But the upside, because I look for the upside.
It was great.
The upside is because you were, if you're a small school, you probably got some traffic that you might not have gotten because they couldn't hear the pitch for the big school and figured, well, as long as I'm here, I'll talk to this one. So you might have got some extra traffic.
Most of them are boys standing from my table, didn't really do me any good. But no, I think it was a great fair, all, it was awesome. I got four cards and that's a win for me.
It was really well done.
It has a great reputation and as people have said, we, we have a lot of folks from other communities that come out because it has such a good reputation.
I've gone in the past, I think, I thought this was, I, it was very crowded.
Yeah.
But aside from that, I've gone to college fairs at the expo up in...
Oh, yeah, with seven hundred schools.
And I thought this was better organized.
Better.
Anyway, well done. I thought, well done. Who else had something to read? Yep, Mr. Morgan?
Just real quick, Chairman. As you know, you, myself and, and Mrs. Burgess attended the ribbon cutting at West Elementary for the basketball courts that were donated from the Wahlberger Foundation and local contractors, whatnot, volunteered their time and effort. So it was a nice little ceremony, they had bouncy houses, they had lunch. And I missed Johnny Drama, but that's all right. Supposed to come back, didn't come back.
Gotta come back, yeah.
But it's, they did a really nice job on the courts and, and it was a nice day for the ceremony.
Yeah, they did come out.
It started in all the places.
Beautiful, beautiful courts and the kids were all playing on them while we were there, so...
Yeah, there was...
That was a nice, nice day.
Real active day for kids, yeah. But don't worry, because Johnny Drama made his drama by leaving early before the ribbon cutting.
His daughter's in all the places, so you'll, you'll have another chance.
You have something else?
I do, I have my usual, the Alumni Association on Thursday. But this time we're gonna be at South High School in the library, so a little bit of change at six fifteen.
More people coming, need bigger space?
I hope so. No, we're gonna go because the dinner for the, the advisory program. So we're gonna, some of our board is gonna go to the advisory so that they can see it and kind of understand a little bit more what we're trying to do with the partnerships with the schools. If we have connections with people, that we can help connect some networking and stuff. Yes, at five thirty.
How many of us will be going to the advisory? I'm going.
I'm going.
I'm not sure yet. My son has a varsity game.
You're going?
Yeah. I haven't called yet because I haven't been here.
It's the sixteenth, it's the deadline.
It's because it's a really good program, I try to go every year. And the community involvement with that, that program...
Yeah, it's good.
Would not be as successful without the buy-in from the community and, and following up with these kids once they graduate. So it's, it's a great...
See you there.
See you there. Anybody else? Good. Good. Now we have the building committee?
Well, we haven't met since our last, we meet on the second, we'll be meeting on the second Thursday. But I did, as... My appointment from the building committee to the anaerobic digestion committee, I did have my first meeting, and...
Oh, subcommittee?
Yeah, on the subcommittee, and we got a thick packet on anaerobic digestion, and I think it's November 8th that we're going to meet. And, well, first, people, bidders can come in and get information or prebid, you know, to see if they want to be involved in it or put in a proposal. So they'll be there, and then JB is offering us a tour of the wastewater treatment plant where the anaerobic digestion will go.
I was trying to figure it out. I was Googling.
My bulb just went on. Thank you.
What is that?
Thank you.
Okay, so that's really all.
That's good.
I'm learning about anaerobic digestion, that's all. It's a good thing.
It's up to you to tell us. Or not.
Right? I think they are not.
Dr. Ghul, personnel announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Begley. We have two certificated appointments this evening. We have four classified appointments and two resignations.
Very good. Ms. Badger, the warrant.
Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and transfer and transactions summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S-102215 dated October 22nd, 2015, in the amount of $1,274,802.37 as presented.
Seconded by Dr. Sorenson. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now we have minutes from August 3rd. Anybody?
I can't try to help you out.
Oh, you weren't there? Somebody please? Okay, Ms. Hunt?
I move that the minutes of the August 3rd, 2015 school committee meeting be accepted and approved as presented.
Do I have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, and one abstention. Ms. Badger abstains.
Oh, that's right.
Right. You're a world traveler then. Now, 9:14, minutes from 9:14.
Is somebody in?
Ms. Badger?
I move that we accept and approve the minutes of 9:14 as presented.
Mrs. Burgess seconded it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Disposal of equipment, and it's hedge disposal.
Yes, tonight, we have two items. The first item is a duplicator, and it's 16-year-old, 16-years-old, and it's not working efficiently. And it's really, it's too costly to repair.
And by a duplicator, we mean a copying machine, right?
Yeah. We do them together, or do we have to do separate?
I was like, you don't mean one of those.
It, it could be one of two. It could be a Xerox type of machine or a, or a modern, a more modern duplicator, which is called a risograph.
I'm sorry. She distracted me.
It's probably...
It's a little bit more than 16 years.
Yeah, that's a long time.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it is.
The crank one.
I would, I would say that it's a risograph machine, which is a modern-day purple duplicator like we used to have.
Yeah.
But the, the risograph is a modern-day version of that.
They're not purple anymore.
And how would we dispose of this? It didn't give me that.
It will, what we would do is typically with machines of this nature, they would go towards the, to the town auction. And any machine items like that would go to the town auction.
Can we do the second one, whether it's hedge, all hedge? We'll make one motion.
Okay.
I just have a quick question.
Yep, go right ahead.
Is this piece, I'm assuming that this goes back to our, the contracts that we did last year, and we put all the, didn't we do all the schools with the copiers?
No, that was, that was only for North.
Oh, only North?
That was North only.
I think it was. Okay. Thank you.
Keep in mind, if we did, if we are replacing this machine, what we, our first option is try to get some level of rebate or exchange on a new one. So there might be some exchange there. If that can't happen, then it'll go to a town auction.
Okay.
And there's been a request to handle them both together, even though they're separate action items? If we want to, if we're okay with that, then we have the book one for hedge also?
Yes, and the next one is the, and an old version of Everyday Math, where this is version two, we're on version four. So this is a discarding of, of that textbook series. And they would be recycled, so we would give them to some book organization to have them recycled.
Yeah, and the materials are the same, part of the Everyday Math?
It's a new, we have a new version of it, yes.
Updated with the...
No, no, but it says books and materials. I'm saying...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. I, I'll move that we vote to dispose of the equipment and materials, and books from the Hedge Elementary School.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Ms. Badger seconds it? Sorry.
You can have it if you want.
No, I can't. I couldn't see that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Could you help me with the motion and the second again?
Mrs. Badger?
Ms. Burgess and Ms. Badger?
Yeah.
Thank you. And that was unanimous? Thank you.
That was unanimous, and...
What about these things here? Now, these, they were, the amendments to the mask bylaws, should we, we didn't have to vote on, or do anything about that?
Right. It's not ticking in time to the same thing, though.
It's, it's, she'll be there at the same, it's on the same meeting. There's the, the changes to the bylaws that are going to come up.
Oh, yeah, I think I have that.
Yeah. But we didn't need to take any actions on it.
Executive session? Yeah. I just wanted to see what's going on with this thing.
See what's going on, he knows.
In other words, did we need to vote on these as well?
Yeah, that's all a mask amendment. Do we need to or not?
The proposed amendments to the mask bylaws. In July 2015, the Mask Board of Directors approved two proposed changes to the mask bylaws to be presented to the delegate assembly. They were inadvertently omitted from the delegate manual. These proposed bylaw amendments are presented here and will be added to the agenda for consideration by the delegate assembly. If we want to vote on, so one proposed changes to mask bylaws is referred by amendment to Article Eight, Section One. Addition of the following paragraph to Section One, "Any member of the Mask Board of Directors serving on the Board of Directors for the National School Board Association shall continue to serve as a voting member of the Mask Board until such time as his..." It goes on and on. I think we want to trust, Ms. Hunt, she's very familiar with the...
It's probably not earth-shattering stuff. It's probably just updating things.
Housekeeping, forming of the board. I, I think.
Okay, then just trust her.
We'll trust her.
If I have any questions, I'll, it's actually, we have one more meeting the day before.
We do have one more.
We have one more meeting before that thing, so you can go with them too.
Okay.
She can look at it and decide whether...
If I have any questions, I'll ask then.
So now, we didn't do the executive session that we were going to do, so now I need to have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move that we go into executive session for the purpose of safety.
Yes.
Second.
And seconded by Ms. Badger, and I need a roll call. Start down there.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The school committee has voted to go into executive session, and we will be returning, but only for the purposes of adjourning. Yeah, we return to adjourn.
Yep.
So we won't come back on the air. What's that?
We'll be adjourned following the executive session.
Yeah, same difference.
They got to leave.
Oh, yeah, so they can leave.
You got to get them out of here.
Okay, they want, okay. So I really don't hit the gallery yet. I won't touch it. All right.
Do we go in there?
We'll break. We're off the air for tonight and into executive session.